I would like to call, I would like to call the Prince William County School Board I need approval of the closed session agenda.
Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Trentum.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda as recommended.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Madam, second, oh, I'm watching TV. Vice Chair, please. I second.
Thank you. Let's vote.
I got caught, I had ugly traffic in here. It was for me.
Taking a vote, are we? See the closure.
What?
I'm not seeing the, could we take a vote again, please? Could we vote again, please?
Yes.
Now, here we go.
The vote is five yes, three absent. Deutsch, Sawyers, and Williams. Motion passed.
Moving on to the, moving on to, to the motion to enter closed session, I need a motion, a motion is in order.
Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Trentum.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711, the Prince William County School Board enter closed session for the following reasons. One, to discuss the appointments and releases of specific employees under Virginia Code, Section 22-3711 Alpha 1 and 8. Two, to discuss and consult with legal counsel regarding requests for religious exemptions pertaining to specific students under Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711 Alpha 2 and 8. Three, to review and consult with legal counsel regarding the reassignment appeal of student SR-18-008 and OSMAPs expulsion recommendation for student MS-18-001 under Virginia Code, Sections 22.3711 Alpha 2 and 8. And four, to discuss the appointment of specific students as student representative and alternate representatives to the school board under Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3711 Alpha 1.
Madam Vice Chair.
Mrs. Roston.
I second.
The vote is five yes, three absent, Deutsch, Sawyers, and Williams. Motion passed.
The Prince William County School Board will enter closed session and return upon opening session in approximately one hour. The Prince William County School Board will now, is reconvened, returning to open session We need to, we're at item 701, approval of the closed session consent agenda.
Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the closed session agenda, consent agenda as recommended.
I need a second.
Madam Vice Chair.
Is it, Mr. Trentum?
I'll second.
Please hold on.
The vote is seven yes, one absent, Sawyers. Motion passed.
We're moving on to item 7, 801.
Madam Vice Chair.
Eight, I'm sorry, 801. Approval of the closed session consent agenda.
Madam Vice Chair.
Closed, closed session, 801 is the closed session consent agenda. Okay. We're moving to this closed session consent agenda, and we need a motion, I think we're going to have to go back to this online voting to clear this out. Yeah, we've got a, it's still up here. Yeah, it's still on the screen.
Can you, can you remove the vote?
Okay. We're moving on to the closed session certification, a motion is in order.
Madam Vice Chair.
Mr. Trentum.
I move that pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3712, the closed session of the Prince William County School Board meeting of November 1st, 2017 be certified by adopting the following resolution. Now therefore be resolved that the Prince William County School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. One, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard and discussed or considered by the school board.
Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Williams.
Like to second.
I'm hit, save.
The vote is seven yes, one absent, Sawyers. Motion passed.
I would like to call, I would like to call this meeting of the Prince William County School Board to order. There will be a moment of silence at the request of Ms. Allison Sattawite, Gainesville The pledge of allegiance will be led by Cub Scout Pact 1195 from Marshall Elementary and Pennington Traditional.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm Kayden Saluman, I am 10 years old.
I'm Ethan Call, I'm 10, and I go to Marshall Elementary School.
I'm Noah Vela, I'm 10 years old, and I go to Marshall Elementary School.
I am Everett Woodward, and I, I'm 10 years old, and I go to Marshall Elementary.
I'm Andrew Benson, and I am 10 years old, and I go to Pennington Traditional.
I'm Nathan Neala, and I'm 10, and I go to Marshall.
On, we're moving on to the adoption of the consent agenda, a motion is in order.
Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. A motion to approve the public agenda.
Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Madam Chair, Vice Chair.
Mrs., I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Diane.
Diane, I'm sorry, I don't want to call you Diane.
That's okay.
Mrs. Rosten, sorry about. Discussion?
The vote is seven yes, one absent, Sawyers.
We're now moving on to the consent agenda. A motion is in order.
Madam Vice Chair.
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Second. I need a second.
Yes. Madam Vice Chair, I second.
Ms. Rosten. Let's vote.
Madam Chairwoman.
I'm sorry, discussion?
Madam Chairwoman. I request that we withdraw item 12.86 from the consent agenda and move it to Board Matters.
Twelve, 1206?
Yes, ma'am.
And you would like to have it moved to?
Board Matters.
Do we need to refresh? Everyone, please refresh. Okay, it's done, yeah. Thank you. Motion is in order. To approve the consent agenda. Yeah.
For 1201. Do vote.
It's the same vote?
Yes, the same vote.
Same vote.
Did the vote before for 1201 get it?
Is it recorded?
No.
I'm, I'm going to take the vote. Let's take the vote.
I don't know what's wrong, it's not you, just click on that.
Sorry, people, we're having some technical situations here.
Wait, 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 don't say that. What? Tell me, I'm not present.
Yeah, okay.
Definitely present.
The vote is seven yes, one absent, Sawyers.
On to citizens' comments. And it looks like we have a group of four and one individual, so that would be Deborah Bedzo, Carlos Cortez, Christopher Mansar, Hayden Wills, who signed up. Of course, we don't have enough to worry about people not, not having enough time. You will have three minutes, and at the end of three minutes, I will keep the time, the light monitor will indicate your progress, the yellow light will signify that you will, should sum up your position, red indicates your time is up, and you should stop. Please use proper decorum and manners while at the podium. If you do not do so, we will be, you will be asked to step aside. Please give your name and address for the record, and when you approach the podium. Oh, there, oh, I'm sorry. There is an additional list of people who signed up at the door, Serena Hicks and Bill Petrack. Was there any other names that I may have missed? Riley O'Casey? You may.
Hello, parents and school board of directors. My name is Deborah Bedzo, and I am representing Henderson Elementary School. I am going to talk about how I ended up from kindergarten to fifth grade in this school. First, I would like to say thank you to Ms. Bevins for this opportunity to represent Henderson. Henderson Elementary School was a big factor why my parents bought a house on the Cardinal Drive to be in the school district where I will be a part of the Henderson family. My parents researched and found out Henderson was a, has been a school of excellence for 14 years, recognized by the Virginia Department of Education as a school of excellence by the Virginia Technology Engineering and Educator Association, recognized by the International Technology Engineering and Educator Association of Program, for the Program of Excellence 2014. Also, Henderson is known as a focus school for children engineering integrating science, technology, engineering, and math program, of which I am part. I would like to say the teachers, administration staff, and are more like a family. The teachers, principal, and administration staff are very communicative, and their dedication to students and the student is, community is outstanding. Teachers and the principal always update our parent on what is going on in classrooms and the school as a whole. Board of directors' parents, I would like to say my experience with my teachers from kindergarten to fifth grade has been very awesome. Ms. McClarmack, Carol, Piper, Plumbo, Dora, and now Ms. Acey, they take their time to explain and make sure every student in the classroom understands what is being taught. Apart from the excellent teaching discipline in both teachers and students is a remarkable achievement of this school, and I would like to say a big thank you to Ms. Bevins for maintaining this homework for these years. At every point in the school, whether in the classroom, dining hall, or on the playground, are high standards for our behavior. They also make sure we are not bullied, both at home and at school. The school always select fun and learning places for us to go for field trips, and I have known places, learned a lot, and had fun from the trips. We also socialize and have fun with our schoolmates, teachers, past old students, and parents during school programs, such as Muffins with Mom, Girls Fitness Club, Spring Scoop, movie nights, and spirit nights. Henderson Elementary from kindergarten up to fifth grade has been, had a tremendous impact in my growth. It was not easy for me combining my academic work and social life, but with the help of my parents, teachers, and the school curriculum, I have been transformed greatly from sometimes a messy to more organized Deborah today. I have achieved a lot from many of the school programs, but one that makes me proud is the school book buddies, where I read to students in first grade to improve upon their reading skills. If, it has helped me.
I'm sorry, Deborah, I'm sorry, your time is up. Okay, we'll bring up the next individual. Carlos, and the three of you, Christopher, Carlos, and Hayden, you have three minutes total, I'm going to give you another three minutes, okay? Hold on.
Good evening, my lady, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Hayden Samuel Wills, and I am a proud Husky representing Alexander Henderson Elementary School as a fifth grader in Ms. Butera's class. Henderson has been a school of excellence for 14 years and has received many other rewards, rewards in the six years that I've attended, I've been attending the school. Henderson offers a wonderful variety of academic enrichment programs and after-school clubs. I've had the honor of being in both start and sing mit with my wonderful gifted education teacher, Ms. Colleen Kendrick, since second grade. An after-school theater group was formed, and I played the Tin Man in Henderson's amazing production of The Wizards of, Wizard of Oz. I've really enjoyed the Henderson Fitness Club that meets after school in April and May, and ends in all of us running the Henderson 5K in the beginning of June. This past June, I even beat my dad by nine minutes. Henderson offers camp invention as a week-long summer program. My little sister and I both participated, and we loved all of the STEM-based activities.
Carlos, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to stop you and give another minute to the next individual. Christopher?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Christopher Mansar, and I'm a fourth grade student at Henderson Elementary School. I'm very excited to be here tonight to speak about my schools that I have attended since kindergarten. Henderson has been a school of excellence for the last 14 years, and it is very deserving of these awards. Everyone at this school, including our principal, Ms. Bevins, all the teachers and staff members, work very hard for the students. They are dedicated to providing a warm and welcoming environment, as well as a wonderful learning experience. I am very fortunate to attend Henderson, a focus school for children engineering integrating STEM. I really enjoy all the STEM products we do at the end of each science unit. Our third grade class last year was very lucky to have a 3D printer in our own classroom. We loved exploring all the possibilities with the 3D printer, and I was able to learn so much while still having fun and enjoying school. We're able to, we are able to continue using the 3D printer this year in the STEM lab, which is one of my favorite things at school. I've created so many wonderful memories over the last several years as a student at Henderson Elementary School. Some of my favorite experiences are the extra activities or school plans such as the Spring Scoop, Family Fun Run, Bingo Night, and Movie Night. This past June was my first time participating in a 5K run, and I look forward to it next year. I also truly enjoyed the book character parade we do once, we do, we reach our goal of reading 6 million minutes. I love dressing up as my favorite character for a whole day. Our end of quarter learning celebrations in our own classroom are great.
I'm going to have to have, I'm going to give more time to Hayden, so Hayden has a chance, okay? Thank you. To the audience, we do have a lot of time. Hayden?
It was out of order.
Is that, are you Carlos? Okay, it's out of order on my sheet, I'm sorry. Carlos, I'm just not going to put you on the clock. But I'm watching you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Carlos. I've been, I've been in Henderson a little over two years. When I started in Henderson, I had just arrived in the US. I was born in Honduras. Thanks to Isol and Ms. Jacobs Meyer, I can now speak, write, and read in English like a fifth grader, although I'm only a fourth grader. My favorite subject in school is math. Thanks to Ms. Sedolka, I did 96% better than the kids in my grade level in the whole US. Henderson is a great school because you learn a lot, you have fun with your teachers, you do fun STEM projects, and you go to Enco, you do fun activities like Field Day and the Rita Sun. That's why Henderson is a great school.
May I? To be fair, the second student, I think I took away some of your time. I'm going to give you a chance to come back, because I don't want your mother to call me tomorrow.
Can I continue?
Yes, you may. You don't have a clock, but I'll be watching.
My little sister and I both participated, and we loved all the STEM-based activities. Speaking of STEM, Henderson Elementary has a new STEM lab, and we got to attend STEM as part of our weekly encore rotations. I really like our STEM teacher, Ms. Davis. I also love that Henderson encourages us to participate in music programs. I play the viol on our Henderson orchestra. At the beginning of fourth grade, our former art teacher, Ms. Seif, helped us to campaign for our school election. She helped us to better understand politics in the entire election process. I got elected, and I am the current president. Henderson has a morning TV show called WHES Student News. I'm the current manager of the show, and I love how much, how much we have all learned about media productions. We even have a new green screen that we get to use soon. The Henderson PTCO sponsors many wonderful events throughout the year, and my favorite is Spring Scoop. We have a giant ice cream social and auction-off baskets to raise money for our school. Henderson has the best crossing guards in all Prince William County, and I am proud to serve as the fifth-grade safety patrol with them. Mr. Fronti, our P.E. teacher, is doing a wonderful job as the safety patrol coordinator. The Henderson teachers and staff encourage all of us to do, to, all of us to put our others first. We help to raise money for charity through Penny Wars. We do a teddy bear tree to help, to help collect stuffed animals for children in hospitals. We donate canned food to help fill the food pantries. We also do heavenly hats, where we all get to go to school and wear a hat if we bring a dollar, to help children fighting their battle with cancer. I'm so incredibly honored that I was chosen to speak to you all tonight. I love Henderson so much, and I am grateful for all the memories I've created over the years. Thank you.
And Ms. O'Casey, you have three minutes. You know, you know this, you've been.
Yes. Good evening, board members. Dr. Walts, my name is Riley O'Casey, and my address is on file. As president of the Prince William Education Association, I am blessed with the opportunity to visit schools across the division. While on these visits, I continue to meet incredibly dedicated educators who, on a daily basis, give their heart and soul to every single student in their care. The world of education for our teachers and support staff is not what it used to be. We used to be about the whole child. Now we seem to focus less on the child and more on the score. Our children are not scores. Our teachers and administrators are not scores. The presentation on the division's strategic plan shows that most of our scores are at or above the state and national average. Yes, there is an achievement gap. Yes, we have work to do, but I ask this board to celebrate our successes, celebrate the hard work of our employees, and never forget that students, teachers, administrators, and schools cannot and should not be measured by a score on a test. As employees in the divisions develop their SMART goals, and the superintendent presents his goals in connection with the strategic plan, I ask the members of our board, do you have goals for yourself? Do you have goals as a board? How will your constituents measure your performance? I challenge you to make your performance part of the customer satisfaction survey. Invite real feedback without fear of retaliation. Set a SMART goal for yourselves you can work toward with the success of our students and the people who teach them at the core. We are taxpayers as well as employees, and as such, you have a responsibility to represent us well. Thank you.
Serena Hicks?
Good evening, Dr. Walts, board members. My name is Serena Hicks. My address is on file. I actually am here to talk about something that we don't usually talk about, because I homeschool my daughter, as many of you know, because we've talked about it. And generally speaking, we homeschoolers don't come and talk to you, but I'm going to talk to you today, because I got an interesting letter from y'all. When I do my stuff for my daughter, it comes with a letter of intent that I send to the school district that says, "I intend to homeschool my child." And you guys send me back, "Hey, that's great. We got your letter. Go on about your business. Send us the tests at the end of the year." We're all set. But this year's letter was a little different. This year's letter included a, "Hey, why don't you consider partial enrollment for your kid in our schools? Why don't you think about maybe doing an online class? It'll be great." And I thought, "I'll ask her." So I asked her, and she said, "Sure. Sounds cool. Let's do it." And so I called the homeschool coordinator, who informed me, "Good deal. Call the middle school. Call the middle school." And the middle school said, "What?" And I said, "This is what's going on." And the middle school said, "What?" So I called the homeschool coordinator again, and she said, "No, no, no. Take all your stuff. Enroll there, and you can do partial enrollment, or you can do online school." And I'm like, "All right, we'll do that." So back to the middle school we went with all of our documentation. And the counselor said, "What? I don't know what you're talking about." Had no clue what this program was, no idea what was going on with it, none. Called, called back to the administration. Finally, she did a fantastic job hunting down the information she did not have. But I would suggest to you that if you're going to send me a letter that says, "I am eligible for this thing," perhaps maybe include how to make that happen. As it turned out, there were only two classes that she was eligible to take, not all of the offerings, neither of which were classes she wanted to take. So we didn't end up doing that this year. But as a representative of the homeschooling community, it would be great if the communication we got from the district was clear, and not only was clear to us, but was also clear to the staffs at the school, who actually have to, you know, implement these things. That's what I got. Have a great day. Bye.
Thank you, Ms. Hicks, I think.
I'm Bill Petrac. I'm from Woodbridge, and my address is on file. I'm here tonight to talk about the politicization of the school board, and I want to start off by asking a rhetorical question. Where's Mr. Sawyers? Mr. Sawyers has brought a level of politics to this school board that has never been seen before. He has trashed many of your reputations and his antics, and as you all know, he has missed four out of the five meetings this year. So when does he step down? For those of you who are watching and listening in the audience, he's running for Congress, and a lot of parents think that he doesn't really care about education. He's more concerned about his congressional campaign. So a group of parents got together a year ago, and we started a campaign to recall Mr. Sawyers. And we're serious about this, and we'd like to see him leave without us getting the signatures. We need 6,409 signatures to take it before a judge. We have over 5,000. We've been at parades, we've been at polling booths. Next week, we will be at many polling booths, taking signatures for parents that believe Mr. Sawyers needs to step down. As a board, I hope, and we hope as parents, that you find a way to remove Mr. Sawyers for missing four out of five. And oh, by the way, for those that are listening and watching, that one school board that he did make, he was only there for half of the school board, and there was a bipartisan, and I hate to even use that word for school, because this should be a nonpartisan school board. There was a majority vote to censure Mr. Sawyers for multiple ethical violations. And a lot of folks that are watching tonight and are sitting in the audience have no idea what's going on in the school board and how it's affecting their children. He's involved in four lawsuits right now. As many folks know, he is suing a principal, he's suing the attorney, Ms. McGowan, he's suing Dr. Walts, and the county is paying for their lawyers. They're paying for lawyers because he's involved in another civil suit with two of the school board members. He's one of them. So we're paying for the attorneys for those folks. The insurance is picking up. I can't imagine what the insurance is going to be next year, but anything that the insurance doesn't pick up, the county's going to pick up. He has spent so much money, he has made staff afraid. He has teachers afraid. We have a lot of folks that work for the school system that have signed our petition. They're not afraid, but we have had a lot that are afraid. So I would like to hear, and we would like to hear from you board members, that no person that works for the school system should be afraid to sign a petition without retaliation. Thank you very much. www recallsawyers.com.
Thank you very much. I would like to just stop for a moment, and as I was introducing everyone, there's a new member on our board, and we now have a parliamentarian. And I have to agree that there has been quite a bit of disagreement on the board about policies and procedures. So we recommend that we have a parliamentarian on the board, so that it would aid us and facilitate these meetings. And I want to thank Ms. McGowan, because she brought this gentleman's name to our attention. And his name is Mr. Thomas Albolch, and he is one of the authors of Robert's Rules of Order. I know that's just great reading. And at dinner, he was just so excited. He showed me a page, and I said, "Ooh, that's really exciting." But he is a member of our board. I just wanted him to stand up and for you guys to welcome him to Prince William County Thank you very much. And now we are moving on to, we're going to the strategic plan, and this is up for information. And before we present, a couple of things happened at the last board meeting. We decided to do Part One, which has to do with all the data, and that we would look at the second part, which is Goals Two, Three, Four.
And Five.
Five. And we would have another meeting to discuss Part One. But Ms. Dolch indicated that, asked that when we were making our agenda planning, that we maybe review Part One tonight. Are all board members on board with that? Do you have your notes, and you're ready? Okay, so we'll listen to Part Two, respond to Part Two, and then we will go back and look at Part One. Ms. Rita Goss?
So, good evening, Vice Chairman Jessie, school board members, and Dr. Walts. Tonight is Part Two of our strategic plan presentation of the first year of our 2016 through 2020 strategic plan. Tonight, we will be focusing on the data for Goals Two through Five of the strategic plan, and at this time, I would like to invite Dr. Jennifer Casada, the Director of the Office of Accountability, to come forward and present this data to you.
All right. Good evening, Mrs. Jessie, school board members, Dr. Walts, principals, and everyone else in attendance. As Mrs. Goss just said, we're here to present Part Two of the strategic plan report. For anybody watching at home and wonders where the rest of it was, it was presented last time, and you can go back and watch it if you really would like to. So Goal One was focused on student achievement, which is what we're all about, right? But it takes a village, right, to serve our children, so we have other goals in our plan that are surrounding that achievement goal, and tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about those. So, okay, hold on now, they didn't turn it on. There we go. Okay. So this is the first year that we're doing this this way with two parts to the presentation, and we're presenting information from last year and some previous years. And again, it provides us, just like for the achievement data, with an opportunity to reflect on where we are and set improvement priorities and targets. And in that vein, we're showing connections to the superintendent's goals that were set for this year by this board, where they, where they connect to the strategic plan measures. This slide is a repeat from last time that Mrs. Goss shared with you, telling you that we have five goals for our plan, and as I said, Goal One is our centerpiece, and the other goals kind of wrap around it to support our 2020 vision for our graduates, which is that nice little I chart on the right side. Okay. One piece of Goal One, you're going to say, "Wait a minute, you just said Goals Two through Five," but recall last time I said we were going to revisit one thing, because we didn't have all of the information at the time. And so this is a slide related to college readiness. The way that we're looking at it here is based on how the Virginia Community College System sent some placement criteria for admission or transfer students. And so when they can identify students who are ready to proceed into college, right? And so with the introduction of the new SAT, these criteria were updated. We use these criteria as part of determining college readiness. What you have on your screens has been updated. There's a note that was originally published, so the numbers changed slightly, because we were still receiving the information when we posted in board docs. So as you can see, there is a big jump, particularly in the area of reading. The blue bars represent reading, and the maroonish ones represent math. So the percent of our graduates who are meeting those criteria, what's involved in those criteria means that students met a specific cut score on the SAT, or ACT, or an AP test, or an SOL test in reading, or Algebra II. So the higher level classes, and so that's showing we have 69% of our graduates who reach the benchmark in reading, and 41% in math. Those are both increases from the previous year, but they're not where we want them to be, and we're continuing efforts to, to do that. One way that this is monitored is through a report we have that's called a college readiness report, that our counselors and administrators can look at, and it flags and identifies students who have hit one of these benchmarks, including some that is early as in 10th grade with the PSAT. Okay. Now we're moving on to climate, and that's the first goal we'll discuss in detail tonight. So remember that we're linking the superintendent's goals to the relevant strategic plan goals. As you all know, Dr. Walts visits every single school facility during the school year, and those are not just for meet and greets. While he's there, he's monitoring for productivity. He's also hearing things about any concerns the schools have. So this, this goal is to address that. And then in order to, the next two, oh, hold on. All right. Now we've moved on to the actual strategic plan, strategic plan measures. So in order to support students, our employees must be able to relate to those students from all backgrounds. As you know, Prince William County Schools is now mandating some culturally responsive training, responsiveness training for all staff members who interact with students on a regular basis. It's going to use, involve the use of some online modules. And then in addition, within each building and office, a lead person will be identified and trained with more extensive training, who will then provide additional training at the schools. We're exciting to be building the capacity of staff in this way. And in addition, Prince William County is continuing our emphasis on building and maintaining high-functioning professional learning communities. What's exciting for us at Central Office is the development of what we're calling coordinated services, that really began in earnest last year and is continuing this year. So all the offices and student, in the Department of Student Learning and Accountability are really working together and going through training together to make sure that everybody's on the same page in the outreach to support schools. All right. You needed some charts, here we go. So this next, this next slide talks about discipline referrals. And so what this is showing you is the percent of students within a given group that had at least one discipline referral, and it shows you for the past three years. As you can see, last year, 14% of students overall had one or more discipline referrals. You can see that the proportion of students varied across groups with the highest rates for our special education in our African-American students. The next data point is showing chronic absenteeism. This is a new area of focus for VDOE and will be included in the state's accountability system moving forward. Virginia is defining this as 10% or more of days in attendance. What does that mean? That means for a student who's with us all year, they miss 18 or more days. We did have an increase last year in this percentage from the year before. We do have some efforts underway to combat absenteeism issues, including the addition of a lead attendance officer as a pilot to see how that works. So this is a major area of focus. Okay? This next slide is showing us some student wellness data. So students across Virginia are assessed in four physical fitness areas. You can see performance is pretty level over time. Then our concurrent strategic plan calls for comparisons to the state, as well as improvement, and the table on the right can show you, it shows you some information for students in grades five, eight, and 10. grades five, eight, and 10. The measures are separate for boys and girls, and in both, for both genders. And across the areas, Prince William County does have higher averages than the state. All right. Moving on to goal three. This, the next goal that supports student achievement is, of course, family, community, and employee engagement, because those are all essential to our students' achievement. And the superintendent's goal in this area relates to satisfaction of stakeholders, which is measured in multiple ways each year through a variety of surveys. All right. In terms of data, the first measure is in goal three deal with partnerships and advisory councils. It's important to note that this year, principal, all principals are receiving refresher advisory council training that they are now expected to share with their own advisory council members at their schools. So everyone's kind of getting re-normed on this process, and then expected to take that back to the building level. Okay. So this next slide is showing overall satisfaction data from parents, students, teacher, teacher assistants, administrators, and central office staff, moving left to right on the screen. All groups except one, those secondary students, have satisfaction above 90%. You can see where those vary. So the bottom, for people who don't want their eyes to strain, the metric on the left is starting at 80%, going up to 100. So you see the variation there over time. All right. We now look at data related to goal four, which is our qualified workforce, which is obviously essential to supporting our students. And the superintendent has two goals in this area. One is to collaborate with human resources to make sure that we have percent of students in classes taught by highly qualified teachers be at least 96%. You'll say, why is that? That's because that's where we were last year. And then to have our turnover rate be less than 12%. You may ask, why that? That's because that's what a benchmark national average has been. So here's some data on the first one. So you can see that in this past year, we had 97% of teachers in this highly qualified category, which means that they're fully certified and endorsed for all of the classes that they teach, right? So teachers can teach different things, but this means across all sections. And this is slightly up from 2015, 16. It's also important to note that it is still quite challenging to fill some positions in high-need areas. So an increase here is a good. We also have a target in the strategic plan related to having one nationally board-certified teacher for every 500 students. We are still slightly below that. This is a tricky slide sometimes to read. Just to let you know where we were last year, we had one teacher for every 535 students. So the goal is to get that to be one to every 500. It is also important to note that these calculations only include those people serving as teachers, not people who've gone through the national board certification process and who are now administrators. So the ratio includes those people acting in a teacher role, because we have others who are now administrators, many of whom are in this room tonight. Okay. The next slide is focused on professional growth. One of the objectives in the, under goal four, is focused on professional growth and development. So all of our employees complete professional development plans, called our Professional Growth Plan, or PGP for short. All of our first-year teachers are supported for, by a mentoring program for the first three years. All employees are evaluated through our standards-based performance evaluation system, affectionately known as the PPP. And everyone is participating in professional learning communities and collaborative learning teams. All right. Next measure under goal four, the next two measures are focused on opportunities and salaries. So Prince William County Schools is still trying to ensure a diverse workforce through appropriate means, and continues to have competitive and salary benefits packages. As you all know, because you approve them, there was a step increase for this year. All right. This next slide shows you retention and turnover percentages. The stacked bars are showing you both. Some people like to look at turnover, some people like to look at retention. It depends on whether you want the positive view of it or the negative. This slide also has been altered slightly since what was posted. Due to a glitch in the way the slide was generated originally, some percentages didn't add up right. So we went ahead and fixed it. So you can see that the percentage for 16, 17 was 9%. That is lower than that 12% target that was set, meaning that 91% of our teachers are being retained. All right. Now we're moving on to goal five. It's the last area of the plan that we will review. This goal is really focused on how we, as a system, work to support our students, teachers, and schools in an aligned fashion. It's critical that our improvement efforts be aligned with one another in order to maximize the benefits and impacts for our students. Okay. As a result, the superintendent has goals in this area as well, and they're related, you can see, to monitoring and then responding to concerns. So one is about monitoring school improvement plans to see that they're aligned with the strategic plan, warms my heart. And the other is about responding to stakeholder issues, particularly those raised by the professional associations. As I said, it warms my heart to see that we're looking at the alignment of plans. So it's, one of the measures is that school and department plans are aligned with the goals and objectives of this strategic plan. And so there's ongoing monitoring by the level associates and Mrs. Goss to review all of the school improvement plans, and work with principals to ensure alignment, that those plans have the goals and targets that the superintendent has set and the school board has set in those areas of need, particularly focused, for example, on the performance of students with disabilities. And then the external, external performance reviews are, reviews that occur on operations and support side of the school division, including the budgeting for results, or zero-based budget analyses, and the staffing studies that went through last year. Those are examples. We're getting close to the end here. This next objective deals with the equitable use of funds. So the good news is we're meeting these targets. The chart on the right talks about what percentage of the replacement value for our facilities are spent on renovations and renewals, ensuring that that's still happening. And you can see that it's, the goal is for it to average 3%. And you can see it's right around, it's right around that bouncing back and forth between 2% and 3%. You continue to fund in your budgets ways to reduce class sizes. And in terms of checking where things are, we have the internal audits that are conducted on a regular basis. And as you know, we're just about time to start next year's budget cycle. Finally, fiscal integrity. So again, the school division continues to receive unqualified opinions. That does not mean that we've received an opinion by someone not qualified. What that means is it's an opinion without reservations, right? So it means that we received a clean audit. I think that's the right phrase, Mr. Klein. I did it. Okay. So, and then we maintained a positive end-of-year balance for fiscal '17. So thank you very much for your attention and patience as we did this, not once, but twice, to have presentations on the strategic plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Casada. We'll start on this end. Who, do you want to make comments on this portion?
Actually, Ms. Jessie, my comments are all tied in together. I just made a list of questions as I went through both last night. So if you want to start with somebody else and then come back to me, that's fine.
Does, will she need to pull up the slides from the others for your comment?
I'm not sure. If you want to start with somebody else and come back to me, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Trennan.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Okay. So first off, I have to apologize to our staff. I know we were asked to submit our questions advanced, and I found them stuck in my drafts folder in my email. So you're going to get them just off the cuff. I apologize for that. And actually, my questions this evening have to do with high schools. So first off, on slide four, that you were referring to for the preparation for college, I guess my comment and question about this is, the way it reads and the way it struck me when I, when I first read it was it said that about 30% or so of our students are ready for college, which I don't think that's what we're trying to say. But that's the way, that's the way the impression it gave when I first saw it. So first off, I would just ask if we, you know, if there's any more amplification on that piece of that. And the other question I have regarding to that slide is, do we have, and I know you don't have it with you tonight, is, but do we have or could we get comparable numbers for the other school divisions in the, in the region and the state? And then the other question I had regarding high schools, once again, it's probably going to require more, is for the high school, the high school advanced courses, does AP, IB, and ACE courses out there? We, we track the number of students and the percentage of students that actually receive credit for those. Do we, are we, do we have comparative data as far as how our students are doing compared to those, other students that take those courses? Not just, so not just measuring how, what percentage have credit, but how are we doing compared to the other school divisions? And I know with like, some of those, those, we could actually compare ourselves nationally or with an ACE internationally and worldwide. So do we have that data? I, I know we don't have it, and you don't have it with you right now. Is it possible we could get that?
Yes, Mr. Trennan. We can get the comparative data on the college readiness, considering we created a metric. We may be able to do, we can research that in terms of things like, and I saw a question related to SAT and ACT. We can research with our surrounding jurisdictions for that, as well as AP performance in particular. It's going to be a little harder to see some of the others, depending on, you know, I know some neighbors have IB, Cambridge is less common, but we can do as much, we'll do as much benchmarking as we can.
Okay. Thank you. And like I said, if there's any way, just go back and talk to, explain slide four to me better. So like I said, because when I first looked at it and read it, it looks like, it looks like we're saying about 30% of our 12th grade students are college-ready. And I'm going, I think that's not what the message that we're trying to send. So.
Anyone else? Ms. Rawson.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Professional learning communities. Can you explain that mainly to the public that's watching or going to watch one day?
You mean they're not all watching right now?
They didn't know you were going to speak.
They didn't. They didn't. They all came here.
Good evening, Vice Chair, school board members, and Dr. Walts. So in thinking about or explaining professional learning communities to the people that are watching us, it's a group or team members that work together to look at learning together, learning for our students, looking at collaborating to find the best results for our students, and then ultimately using the information of data. And data can be from both formative and summative assessments, okay? So as we track along the way. But it also can be information from our students, information from our teachers, and information from our community. And when they work together, it's like a team. So as many of you are probably thinking about the baseball game that's on tonight, thinking about when we put all of our players together. Some have strengths in some areas, some have strengths in other areas. If we bring those teams together, we'll be able to make the best decisions for our students, as well as look at how we're doing and make changes along the way. So in thinking about not making, we talk a lot about intervention versus remediation. Working in these communities, we intervene to support students not failing, but succeeding.
So all, all of the principals sitting here tonight are members of a professional learning community?
So the way that I would define it is looking at our overall school division as a professional learning community. Individual schools are professional learning communities. And then each of the teams in the schools make up a collaborative learning team that support our students and the school community.
That's interesting. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams.
Thank you. And I'm just going to piggyback off that before I forget. I just want to say thank you to all the principals who are here tonight, especially, I think mostly high school, but I'm kind of short, so I can't see behind some people if I miss you. I know you guys get up earlier and you're at work usually when I'm on my way to work. So God bless you on that. As far as the strategic plan goes, I'm curious, let's see, I started, I had some questions on slide eight with the student disciplinary referrals. This is something I'm really curious, because we are in a state that is considered a prison and pipeline state. And I noticed across the board, it all went up. I know this may be a little funky question, but I'm wondering if, if that's something that occurs, and I'm also going to ask you to look at this for slide 21, too. If we have, if we notice historically, if there's something that goes on, like during a presidential election year, that impacts our behavior in a division? Because I know sometimes election cycles do interrupt normal things. So I just didn't, not necessarily urgent, but I'm wondering if that's something that's a trend that we could watch out for in the future. But I am really curious about the special education class grouping there. I'm wondering, are those, if we drill down in that, if we look and see, like, are these special education students just considered 504 plans, IEP students? You know, what that makeup of the student population is? And then I'm also curious to see, obviously not urgent material, because I know this is going to take a while. I recognize that fully. Out of those discipline referrals, if the students, because I know sometimes we have issues where students get discipline referrals that don't necessarily match their education plan. I know that there's a hiccup in that, just because special education, there's a lot of things that involved with that, and rules and policies and regulations. So I'm just kind of curious if we did an internal look to see if that matches the student's 504 plan or what their discipline is. And my next question is for the African-American, the black category. I noticed that that went up, and I'm wondering if we could figure out why? Because we're not a school division that the population of the black students that outnumbers everyone else, or they're even this most significant minority group. So I think that that, anytime we see a group that is not a high percentage of a population getting a high percentage of whatever it is, whether it be positive or negative, that we should examine that. Because that, to me, speaks to some other things maybe occurring that we're not necessarily focused on. And then just a general, like, I know no one has a crystal ball or an absolute truth, but if there's some, if we've stopped and looked at a vision as to why overall the disciplinary referrals went up, especially considering, I know that we've rolled out a lot of programs, so there's a lot of things for students to be doing. So usually when we keep our students busy, our disciplinary referrals go down. I'm just wondering if maybe there's a hiccup or something that we just have overlooked as to the way that we're implementing discipline? Because I know that varies, too. Like, for example, a teacher, one teacher may have a thing about gum, where, you know, your next teacher doesn't. And those kind of things do impact. So I'm wondering if we could look at the type of referrals that we're giving? Because that also matters. Like, when we just say disciplinary referrals here, that could be like bus tardies, or it could be serious offenses, but we don't really know that. And I think that would be good information for us to have as board members, as well as the public, so they're not just looking at assuming that these are all like kids who are doing the worst of the worst, where it could be a lot of minor offenses. I know that we did a lot of bus referrals last year for tardies and traffic and things like that. So, you know, I just want to see if that's really what the numbers are saying. And then on slide 14, I'm just going to be a little bit of a smarty pants and say thank you very much for this slide. I think this justifies why we should have a student on the board. And I'm done. Thanks.
Thank you. So I have four buckets of questions, but the first set, I guess we'll go with the second part. Going back to the first round, I'll save my questions revolve around career and tech education, college and career readiness, which I kind of feel is overall theme of the second part, special education, and then the strategic goals. So I'll start with some of the college and career readiness questions. Next year, all schools in Virginia will be required to adopt the Virginia Department of Education policies that outline what they define as students who are able to critically think, creatively think, collaborate, communicate, and be an effective citizen. Looking at some of the gaps that we saw at the first part one of our presentation, and the goals that we have outlined, do you believe that these measurements from the state of Virginia will better allow our district to recognize gaps earlier and help more students graduate from high school?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Back.
I'm going to pause for like, I know there's a lot of...
There's a lot there.
Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Walts, Mr. Wilk. So to address your question specifically related to how these efforts around VDOE's policies with the profile of a graduate may have an impact related to the gaps for students in graduating high school? I think one of the things that we can point to that will help address that is intensifying the purpose that students have for successfully completing school by broadening the different options or opportunities that students have. We've been working very hard, I think you all have seen the superintendent share with you some of the media production materials that have been generated to help expose students to a broader array of options post-graduation, to include both the university and college preparation programs, which I think we do a very good job at, as well as the increasing emphasis that we're placing on career readiness goals with things like the addition of the plumbing program at Garfield this year, and other programs that we have, have introduced in the, in recent years, like the cabinetry program at Hilton and the like. So I think when students at that age are more engaged in purposeful work that they see as something that they are excited about, it serves as a catalyst to motivate them to see a light at the end of the tunnel for their high school experience in a way that gets them excited for career and workplace readiness. And so I think, the short answer to your question is yes. I do think that we'll see that have a positive impact on those gaps.
Thank you. Thank you. Maybe you're probably, you might stay up for a little while, all right? In 2010, the College Board released a report that addressed the need of school districts to adopt multiple measures of readiness in preparing students for school. The American Association of School Administrators, double ASA, kicked off a campaign of redefining readiness, which one of their goals was to find other ways of measuring student success other than standardized test scores. Other than standardized test scores, what other metrics are we assessing for measuring our student's success for life after high school in Prince William County?
Okay, so...
So other than basically standardized test scores, what are some other areas that we're looking as a county that we believe define readiness for whether it's a career, post-secondary, to four-year?
Probably the most obvious and most expansive effort centers around things that we do related to industry certifications for students. Now, those oftentimes are test-type scores, but they also are demonstrations of student competencies or proficiencies on soft skills that they're obviously going to need to have to be successful in the workplace. Last year, for example, you know, you're talking about some 15,000 different credentials coming out of this school division alone for that purpose. So that's a good example of a non-traditional type of test measure that we would use to say, measures the kind of thing that you're looking for. Also, the soft skills, the student's participation in clubs and activities that engage them with the community and, and the workplace, the business partnerships that we have as measure, and the opportunities that that affords students to be able to engage in exploring careers and, and other opportunities that are available in the community as well. And I could provide you with additional measures of things that we, that we look at, if that's something that you'd like some more information?
Yeah, no, and I apologize, and this came to the team literally like an hour before closed session. So I completely understand that this is, you know, I'm expecting, like I said, not immediate answers. Probably continuing with you, although we, as a county, should be commended to, and we do improve our overall on-time graduation rates, what are we doing as a county to track our students after they graduate from Prince William? Do we have data on how many of our graduates actually enroll in college? Do they persist and graduate from college? How long does it take them to get their degree? Which colleges do they most commonly attend?
Okay, those are great questions, and we can get information for a lot of it. So Virginia as a state has some mechanisms through which we can track enrollment in two- and four-year institutions, not just in Virginia, but nationwide that are part of the National Clearinghouse. So that's one way that we look at information. I know the Office of Student Services tracks some of that as well, so we'll be able to get information for that on you, because clearly that's something of interest, and there are mechanisms to track some. And then for our students with disabilities, there's also work they do to track as the students are moving and transitioning to education and careers and jobs post-high school. So yes, we can get you that.
Awesome. Okay, that answers that. Next, remedial courses. The U.S. Department of Education recently published that four out of every 10 new college students, including half of those at two-year institutions, take remedial courses, further expanding student loan debt, and leading 60% of students who started college after 2008 on track to graduate on average after six years. As a school system, how can we better service our students and provide them the most robust courses in high school to help reduce the remedial coursework that they're taking after graduating from Prince William County?
All right, here's a preview of the information that you might be able to get. So, and it may help clarify some of what Mr. Trunam was asking about, slide number four. So when you look at the information we have in terms of the, how our students being identified as college-ready by the Virginia College, Community College System, those would be students who would not have to take any remedial courses. So it's 70% of our students, 69% in reading, and it was 41% in math. So that's with the advent, for the very first time, of the new SAT. We expect those numbers to go up because that new SAT is much more aligned with what colleges are expecting, and much more practical and forward-looking than, than it has been in the past. So that is one way, and in terms of efforts for that, the tracking and support of students beginning in ninth grade to identify students who are college-ready is a way to avoid some of those remedial things and costs in terms of, if you go back to the last presentation, things related to dual enrollment and other opportunities to get students on that path before they leave us. And a shout-out to the board, because a lot of the efforts related to the use of the PSAT that you fund for students come with some mechanisms to help provide students with resources that can help them not just score better on the SAT, but then be better prepared for college. So resources like the Khan Academy that are specifically tied to those students' areas of need. So those are some efforts, and we can get you more on that, too.
Yeah. I would only add to that, that a number of our high schools and some of the principals of those schools are here with us tonight, are also looking at, you'd mentioned the College Board earlier, Mr. Wilk, and they've engaged in a process where they're trying to design a, an official PAP program, and some of our schools are applying to pilot that particular program. And its purpose is really to broaden access to the preparation necessary for kids to engage in those higher-level classes in greater numbers. It's one of the things that they ask the schools that are looking at that program to commit to. And so when you combine that with what we're doing with our middle-years program in our IB schools and the IGCSE courses in our Cambridge programs, you'll find that there's a lot of opportunity for students. Our challenge really is to encourage more kids to think of themselves as students who can take on those challenges, and for our teachers to encourage and support them in doing so.
This probably actually flows next topic, more supporting minority and low-income students. To 2017, Gallup found that minority and low-income students and students who are first in their family to a 10 college are at a particular disadvantage in getting advice on college majors. These groups of students have less access to informal work, social, and school networks, and can yield hopeful advice about what to study in college, this study found. As a county, what are some ways we're working with our students, especially our minority and low-income population, to expose them to real-life experiences that will better prepare them for college and future careers?
Good evening. So we are very excited about our EIP program, the Early Intervention Program that is in. I know you love that, don't you, Ms. Williams? That's in our high schools, and our high school principals work very closely with us on that. During the summer and also during the school year, students receive tutoring and different activities, and then at the end of the year, in May, there's a culminating activity, and many of our Prince William County students get lots of scholarships for that. So we're very excited, and it's amazing that you asked that, because tomorrow I am meeting with Mr. Davis from George Mason, and we will be discussing ways that we can better collaborate and work together with that program and share information with our high schools. And then Becca has some other information to share with you.
Just to add, we also have the Pathway to Baccalaureate Program, which some of you may be familiar with, another program identifying first-generation college students and supporting them on the transition from high school to college. And I just want to add, and it's great that we have the high school principals in the room today, thanks to the high school principals, we have seen really a reemergence of the college and career counselor position, that they have made it a priority to fund. And just sitting here tonight, I was looking at Twitter, Freedom High School Counselors taking a group of students on a college tour. They went to four colleges in one day, and that's thanks to the principals and their focus on that college and career counselor position.
Thank you. And this last one about elementary, you know, and I know, Ms. Jessie, one of the things that really engaged me when I first met you is what you did as a principal to take kids down and expose them to campus life as an elementary principal. Hanover Research published a report last year outlining the shifts in college and career readiness at the elementary level. The research found that elementary years are important in shaping students' thought patterns, expectations, goals, and views of self. What are we doing as a county? We heard the high school programs. What are we doing as a county to implement resources to better support students with developing a college and career mindset and attitudes at our early levels?
To start with at the elementary level, the timing of your question is great, because we have the profile of a Virginia graduate coming our way, and part of that is a real focus on career planning at the elementary level. So our elementary students will be required to create an academic and career plan portfolio. So right now, we create an academic and career plan at the middle school level. All students have been doing that, starting in seventh grade for the past four years, but now we're going to have this portfolio, think work artifacts that we're going to collect for students during their elementary years, and then that will transition with them to the middle school as well. So it's an exciting time with that focus on the career planning at the elementary level.
And it's, it's the exposure to a wide variety of different things, and our, our elementary school principals are very creative folks, a number of them have really well-developed and, and have been doing this for years with regard to career fairs and where they bring members of the community in and introduce kids to a variety of different fields. One of the things that I think we're also focusing on is making sure that the, the community knows at earlier ages, we've had feedback from folks like the Superintendent's Advisory Council for Instruction and others, saying there's a lot of great information in those high school course catalogs or in the middle school specialty program brochures. We'd like to see more of that information introduced to us at, earlier in our, in our time in Prince William County schools, so in the upper elementary grades. So, so marketing the things that are available to people, making them more widely known to folks is an area of focus for us as well.
Thank you. A couple, am I okay to do a couple more? Do you want to round robin, or?
I won't. It's a clock.
You're not going to keep a clock? Okay. Couple questions, last ones. This is, this is some of the strategic goals, yeah. Relating to climate, a couple themes I'm hearing from elementary teachers is regarding the number of data meetings they have to partake in throughout the week to review data at the elementary level. Question, are these data meetings a division-wide mandate, or is it a site-based decision on how often they have to review the data? And how, on average, how many minutes of planning do our elementary teachers receive weekly, and do we have an average how often that time is occupied with doing data reviews in their professional learning communities? Oh, Mr. Erickson.
Hi, Mr. Wilk. Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Wilk, Dr. Walts. It's the expectation that schools, when we went to a block schedule, that schools had three, every day they have 45-minute planning at the elementary level. Three of those days would be with teams officially, two would be, or individually, two would be with teams. That would be for planning collaboratively or data meetings. Our practice kind of varies different ways. Some schools are more headed towards the planning piece, and, and some are more towards the data piece, but it's typically that. So 45 minutes, you know, per day is, is their, is their planning time? And you said something about professional learning committees, communities, I missed that part, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to add, how often do we use the data?
Okay. So it typically would, it's two that they're, that they're with teams, but then, you know, that varies. Some schools will do one planning and one data, some schools do one data once a month. It all varies from school to school. Thank you.
Thank you. HR, strategic measure 4.4.2, this is a good thing. I noticed 1% increase in our overall retention numbers. As a county and as a department, do we have any idea what's attributing to these factors of improvement? Do we have any way of addressing or having the way of analyzing through interactions of interviews, staff surveys? Basically, again, you know, noticing the retention was pretty consistent, although 1% might not seem a lot, but we're talking about possibly a couple hundred positions. So I'm curious if we notice anything that might be leading teachers to stay here more in Prince William County? Other than that, we're amazing, right?
This is Jessie. Good afternoon, Dr. Walts, school board members. Yes, we are amazing school division. We do know that a lot of our principals, we have some principals who use very unique techniques in the building, building and strategies that are considered to be best practices, and then we share some of those best practices with other schools. I'm trying to think of some specifics in reference to what are keeping the teachers here. Okay. I, I think a lot of things, again, we have a good benefits package, as well as our salaries, even though we are not as competitive, especially at the beginning, salaries, but we'll continue to do that. But I think that's attractive as well for a lot of our employees to remain here. Amy. Amy White is my Director of Human Resources and working closely with the teachers, and she'll be able to give some responses to. Thank you for showing up.
As you know, we have about 35% fewer people going into teacher education at this point in the last five years, so we've had to make a very concentrated effort in making sure we find the best and retain the best. We have a retention committee, HR, along with OPL, to investigate things that are making a difference with teachers. We have meetings with every principal in the school division two times a year to look at any ways that we can support individual teachers and individual schools. We look at our benefits programs, absolutely salary, you've done wonderful things to make sure we get a step increase every year. The survey we took of teachers, teachers transferring within the county and teachers leaving the counties, said one, the most critical factor was the administrative support that they got in each of their schools. So we look at that to see how can we mentor teachers, mentor principals, and provide the resources they need to work with our students. So even with the 35% decline in teachers, in teacher candidates, we're increasing the retention in Prince William County schools. So I think it's because all of the people here are working hard to make that happen, and you've also given us the resources we need to attract them and keep them.
Want to look at the other side? Thank you for that. Other side of the issue relating to exit interviews. What is done as a county when we complete and compile those exit interviews? Have we, as a county, noticed any trends over the past couple of years kind of coinciding with this, as you mentioned, a 35% drop in the amount of people going into education? And if we have a concrete example of something that we've taken and gleaned from these exit interviews that we've improved as a result of hearing these themes, I'd like to hear an example, if we have one.
That's great. We do look at all of our surveys, and we have increased participation in our exit surveys tremendously in the last few years. We send an individual email to everyone leaving and really encourage, either they come in and have a personal interview with Tanisha Holland, Equity and Employee Relations, or fill out our survey. And we look for patterns to see why are people leaving? We have found last year, I think we mentioned to you, that as many people come in from surrounding divisions as leave. The reasons they give us usually for leaving the county are commute or spousal transfer. We've made the transfer process easier for them. Years ago, you had to stay at a school when you were a probationary teacher for three years. And again, we've said the culture of the school, the climate of a school is key to retaining teachers. So now, after one year of good service, you can transfer closer to home, or so that you're part of a, a school, that you share that vision and it works for you. So we take all of that very, very seriously. We probably look twice a year at all of the information we get from exit surveys to see what can we use to retain our employees? Why are they leaving? Very rarely do we hear simply salary.
In fact, the, the number one reason why people, teachers are leaving is spousal transfer, along with family responsibilities is number two, and then commuting is number three, and of course, we don't control that. And, yeah, those are the top three reasons.
Thank you. Okay. But just to give you a little context, I remember talking about this very subject 10 years ago when I first got here. At that point, 10 years ago, our retention rates were 88%, and our goal, our goal was 95% retention rates. And actually, the discussion we had at the time was, is 95% even realistic, given the, the national average was about 88% then? And the area here, this area is, just lends itself to turn, a certain amount of turnover because of the transitory nature of the area and things like that. So I think actually we're doing well. One of the things that we did see, see in the last 10 years is when the economy tanked, our retention rates actually went up because opportunity, because it's a, it's a good spot to be in where you've got a safe job and opportunities elsewhere, we're actually going down. So you'll, you see kind of that inverse trend with that. But overall, I think some of the discussions that we've had already go to what I've seen in my job as well, is usually people's decision to leave a place isn't based on the larger organization as much as the experience they have with their local management. Like I said, I've seen that in military, I've seen that in the corporate side as well, and I think... and I think we see the same thing. So, that's all, I just want to comment. So, like I said, this has been, just to give some context under that.
I'm always concerned about the hiring and terminations. And Mr. Johnson knows exactly where I stand on this. The turnover among African-Americans and people of color, I'd like to know, what do you think you could do as a department to maintain their services? You know, there are some great teachers that walk out the door. One of the things that I have noticed that's a problem, and I thank Mr. Johnson for teaching this to me, is that sometimes they come, or people come and they don't have all of the certifications that they need. And I know one person in particular who has more certifications than anybody I've ever heard of and still can't make it here. So, what do we do to reach out to those people?
Again, if the certification is the issue, again, years ago, the school division, local school division, used to be able to give the certification. That is no longer accurate anymore. State, the certification is given by the Virginia Department of Education. So, you may have someone, may come in and may not have, may get a provisional contract, but may not necessarily have passed the praxis exam. This contributes to our highly qualified rate. One thing that I've asked the Office of Professional Learning this year is to offer the possibility of doing some type of workshops so that teachers can attend practice, praxis exam. That was one suggestion that we had. And again, I do know that there may be private organizations that do that as well. Once we learn of that, Beth Baker, who's in our Office of Certification, will inform those youngsters who are not looking for certification or practice exams.
Well, I want to thank you publicly.
Thank you.
For the past two years, letting me know that it's Monday. And on Monday, what do we do? We find out who you are keeping and who you're not keeping. So, thank you very much.
A couple of things I would just like to add on to what's been said in response to Board Member Wilk's questions. I'll start with this turnover rate and also piggyback on Mr. Trendham's comment. Our turnover rate is less than the national average, and we're very, very proud of that. I want to also remind the board, and there are several members of the board who have gone through multiple years on the board, but we are one of the only school divisions around that through 10 years of the Great Recession did not lay off or do a reduction in force of any of our employees. And I think our employees are very aware of that. So, that's a compliment to many people, but as I tell people all the time, as a superintendent, I can't do anything without the support of the school board. So, the school board worked closely with the administration through some very difficult years, but that is something that the rank and file, I believe, is quite aware of. Because typically, what happens is you hire new employees, and then there's any kind of an economic issue, those new employees are the first ones to be let go. So, it's not unusual to sometimes have to move several times when you're going through a multi-year recession. The second thing I'd like to comment about is something that a number of the Northern Virginia school superintendents with whom I meet on a regular basis have had concerns with in terms of the college readiness. And it's something that I don't think the average person would necessarily have any knowledge of. There are some states where there's a curriculum and standards articulation that goes from K-12 on into college. So, for example, in the state of New York, there's a chancellor of education for the state. That person is responsible for the accountability structures that go all the way through college. So, there's a very close alignment. Anyone who's been in New York or knows anybody who went through New York, if you pass the region's examinations, you are pretty much all set for college. Something very different here is when you go to, let's say, Nova, you're going to take a placement examination. And that examination, that one-shot, short-answer, fill-in-the-bubble test determines whether you're supposedly ready by the standards of that test. There is no articulation between the Virginia K-12 standards of learning and the examination that has been used by the two-year colleges. And the regional superintendents, I remember we engaged Dr. Templin, who's now retired, but this was a very, very strong concern that we had, that how is it that we can have these very rigorous SOL exit exams, and yet you give a very different type of test and it shows that, you know, 20, 30% of our students are not ready for college? So, that's something that we continue to work on, and I do believe that they are looking at a new examination in that regard. I would also just like to say, and again, you know, I'm not making an accusation, but every time you enroll in a class in college, it's dollars. I'll leave it at that. Finally, I want to make mention about the fact of our school business partnerships in Prince William are amazing. We just had the superintendent's business back-to-school business breakfast, and we had many, many of our business partners, and many of them were recognized this past week. But they continue to provide amazing opportunities where they're partnering with us, not just financial resources, but amazing mentoring resources. I had an opportunity this week to spend about two and a half hours at Lockheed Martin. They put on an event for 100 girls, young women interested in engineering. They spent the entire day at Lockheed Martin. They got to go in some fairly secure areas, and it was quite fascinating. They worked with mentors who were engineers there at Lockheed Martin. They actually had a competition where they had about 75 minutes where they had to create quite a contraption that was then judged. But what's very exciting about this, and I'm just spotlighting this program because I just had it personally, I personally experienced it, and we're a part of this partnership. But what they're doing is they will even take students, regardless of their GPA, who have an interest in engineering, and in particular, if you don't know this, Lockheed Martin in Manassas is all about submarines and all, everything associated with technology on submarines. So, if there's an interest, they believe that there's all kinds of career opportunities at Lockheed Martin. It might be as an assistant, it might be in HR, it might be in reception. But they are going to create hiring opportunities for students who aren't even in college. Over the course of one year, you can get a clearance, you can work to get your governmental clearance, and then if you're interested in college, they have a tuition reimbursement. They have just taken their first three students, two from our school division and one from another, but they are creating 100 job opportunities for students in a very different type of track. So, you may or may not be in college or may or may not think you want to go to college, but they think once you get in Lockheed Martin, they're going to hook you into an advancement track. And this is one of many, many opportunities that are going on right here in Prince William County. Thank you.
I want to make sure that the first time, Mr. Delsh, you want, you're next?
Thank you. Going back to slide four, 1.1.9, I don't know who wants to answer. So, we saw on last meeting, we have about 92% graduation rate. Graduation rates are steadily rising, and that's something we are happy about. We just heard from Dr. Walz about the college readiness test from Virginia, from the community college system, and so we're concerned with those. And so, I'm assuming, just for clarification, the numbers on this slide are the percentage of our students who pass their test there? Or are these based off the SAT? Or what are these percentage numbers?
It's based on the measures that they would identify that would keep students from having to be in, it would be kind of equivalent to their placement test. So, they set metrics or set benchmarks on SAT, ACT, AP exams, PSAT now, and particular SOL tests. So, the reading test, which is given at grade 11, and the Algebra II test in mathematics. And so, if students hit those in reading or mathematics, then they don't have to do some of the courses. And also, they use those same criteria for transfer students. So, Dr. Walz is absolutely right, they have placement tests and those still are in place. These are metrics from them, they're one thing that we're looking at in a couple of ways. One, to identify students.
These are the metrics of the tests that let us skip the placement test when we go to community college?
So, they would be, yes, so they would be able to place into the classes without having to take something remedial. Yes. And so, they're increasing those numbers as the SAT gets more aligned with what they're doing. And, yeah, so that's why you saw a big spike.
Okay, now, when you say increasing those numbers, are you saying increasing the number of test opportunities or lowering the scores on the SATs that are required to pass?
So, there's no lowering of the scores. The new SAT changed, right? The SAT changed in 1617, and so there seems to be a better alignment with their expectations and what the SAT is getting at. And so, our numbers of students right out of the gate with the first iteration of the new SAT are higher than they'd been before. And so, there's no lowering, it was just a different test, and they're starting to include other measures also. And so, our counselors and our teachers and our administrators look at those things and identify students early on who might be meeting metrics but may not have been thinking about those opportunities to make sure that they get put in the right classes to continue on the right track. Does that answer what you're getting?
Yeah, awesome. Okay. And then, so the 92% high school graduation rate. When we look at a program, sorry, when we look at a...
No, I just made a mistake, I went too far. There we go.
All right. So, I guess in looking at a program, the question is, what is your ultimate metric that you're looking to evaluate the success of a program? And one of those, I think for us, is the high school graduation rate. But then the question is the, essentially the value of the high school diploma we're giving. And I think one of those is the college readiness question. So, what is our, and college readiness, and I think looking at through the community college lens is useful because community college is a good tool both for a vehicle straight to the workforce order of four-year institution. Those are two both important and different tracks for post-high school. But what is kind of our benchmark and our key metric for these students are ready for life post-high school to be productive members of society who are going to have a future?
Let me make sure I'm understanding the question. So, you asked about, so we have graduation rate as an external, you know, metric, and we have these college readiness indicators. Which of these or what in addition would be?
What's our, I guess, what's our key college readiness metric? And then, what is the benchmark we're striving for with that? Or if we have two or three, what's the benchmark we're striving for?
Okay, ideally, and I'll let Mr. Bassett go after me, ideally, you know, we would like all of our students to graduate, right? So, on time. And so, that would, we're continually striving to improve there, and you can see that we have every year. So, that target in theory is 100%, but it's really to continue to improve. In terms of the college readiness percentages, because this is a new metric for us, we're still kind of establishing that, right? And with the advent of the new SAT, give us a year, we may be able to set some targets in terms of improvement. Right now, it's focused on going up, but because the landscape changed and they've added new measures, we'll be able to, after we have another year of data, I'd be able to say to set a target on that using those from the Virginia Community College system, which again is one of the few places out there. You see in the literature lots related to college readiness, but coming up with an index or a number is challenging.
So, we're still figuring out our baseline?
We're, this would kind of be new baseline, so I'd say the 1617 data would be baseline because we have the new SAT for the first time, so.
So, and we're primarily using the SAT as the metric?
Well, the SAT is one of the ways students can, not only did the SAT change, the PSAT, which leads up to it, changed also, and the state is now even starting to recognize the PSAT as a way for students to be demonstrating proficiency in reading and math in terms of meeting their expectations. So, the community college, we reached out to them before this presentation to find out how their metrics are changing, and they've evolved quite substantially in terms of what they include as potential ways to place out of those classes. And so, I think it stabilized for a little while, and so that's how we're going to benchmark it. Is that answering your question?
Sure. And then, what percentage of students roughly, I'm sorry, I'll keep asking questions. What percentage of students roughly take an SAT or a PSAT?
Do we have the percentage of students that take the SAT as a whole of the cohort?
We can, I can get you that information.
And PSAT.
And PSAT. Well, PSAT, all of our students take at 10th and 11th grade. And then, we have large numbers of students taking the SAT, if you bear with me for one second. Cue Jeopardy music.
While she's looking for that, let me also mention the fact that this placement test at the community college, part of the feedback that we receive from community colleges is the fact that sometimes students going to a community college will decide at the last minute, while many other people, both community college students as well as four-year colleges, maybe have planned, have taken prep courses, have gotten the SAT preparation books and that sort of thing, whereas they find a number of students that maybe decide more at the last minute, "I'm going to take a couple of courses," but they haven't had that same type of preparation. According to them, that's another issue.
So, and to answer your question about, you know, the students taking the SAT, last year, we had 3,461 of our seniors, you know, out of a cohort that's just over, about 6,000. So, that's SAT, and then you have over 1,200 students who took the ACT. Some of those are overlapping, and we can dig into that and give you more in percentages, but that gives you a context. And recall, last time, we had a percentage of those students taking the SAT with the new benchmarks. There were proportions of those students who were meeting what the SAT defines as their own college readiness. So, we're continuing to gather ways to look at that in the future.
Yeah, awesome. And, all right, I've got a couple of sets of questions. One, just a technical question. Can we, I think there are a few changes between the presentation we have on Board Docs in terms of data updates and what you all have. Can you all just make sure that the updated one's posted to our?
Yes, in fact, it's going to be posted tomorrow, and there were two, there were changes tonight, I mentioned on slides four and 21, and that new version will be posted here and on our website tomorrow.
Appreciate it. Then, moving down to page eight on the referrals. The, I don't, so the, one of the gaps we have is between special ed, I think there's the largest percentage of special ed students consistently that have referrals, and that number is consistent with other studies I've seen in terms of either our school division of being one of the largest gaps. What do we have in terms of what we're doing to, I guess, first, what's causing that gap? And second, what are we doing to address that gap?
Okay.
And is there an appropriate benchmark that, you know?
I'm going to defer to our brand-new director of special education.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good evening, Vice Chair, good evening, school board members, good evening, Dr. Walz. So, you were asking what we're doing to support students with disabilities in discipline. And so, some of the things that we're doing is we have 54 schools in the division participating in the multi-tiered systems of supports, as well as positive behavior interventions and supports. Under Mr. Bixby and Ms. Goss's leadership this summer, the school system participated in the conferences, not, or I'm sorry, classrooms, not courtrooms. And we were recognized by... And we were recognized by the governor as leading the state in the practices of positive behavior interventions and supports. And we are providing ongoing PBIS training throughout the division and throughout the school year.
Would you please explain briefly what that stands for?
MTSS, multi-tiered systems of supports. And PBIS is Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports.
Okay. And so what do we think has been causing the largest gap or causing the gap between referrals here versus other categories? And are some of, do we think that some of the things that you've listed specifically will address that gap?
I do think they will address the gap because there is a large focus on the proactive strategies to address student behavior and ensure that we're doing things to support students before they get to the point where they need to be in any type of discipline.
Very cool. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And then, the last question I have. Well, I've got one last question. The last question is on slide 13, on the advisory council training. I think you stated that all the high school principals were updated or briefed on best protocols for the advisory councils, how they should run this year. Is there a continuum or a interval in which we do that update on a regular basis?
So just to clarify, and then I'll let Ms. Taylor answer about the specific training. All principals through their level meetings that occur have received training related to advisory councils this year, kind of starting, starting fresh. And then the expectation is that they take that back and do that training with their, with their school advisory councils.
So to build on that, and with the principals' meetings and thinking about professional learning, we want to move beyond just two trainings. So I'm working with colleagues in OPL. We will create a online tool, working with our principals that norm practices. As we know, within the division, we have exemplars. So we will be modeling them. The other thing that we're looking in a division our size is building opportunities for online. So we want to build on just beyond teachers, principals in the schools, but we want to look at the school community. So if I'm a parent, if I'm a student, if I'm someone in the community that wants to be able to advocate and be part of my community, I'll be able to go online. Our goal is that it's just-in-time training this year. So each month, principals, school communities will receive the topics. They'll be able to go online, and then by the end of the year, we will have an online modules for each school advisory monthly. But it also will give autonomy to principals.
And then these, and then these modules would be something that people can consistently access, or?
So our goal is when they're completed, they will be able to consistently access them. They will have videos of our students, our parents, our teachers, and our administrators.
Okay. So that basically, there can be, it's basically an ongoing resource that's sitting there?
Yes.
Cool. All right. And then what are we doing to encourage cross-sharing of ideas between advisory councils?
So thank you for that, too. In our first two principals' meetings, we have been having principals bring materials, share best practices. And then again, on those online modules that we're building under each month, we will have topics, again, that should be addressed during those times, things such as budget, things such as resources in schools, addressing gaps. And those activities that principals use to facilitate will be on there as a best-practice resource. The school board, all members of the community will have access to this.
Excellent. That's exciting. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
So additionally, Mr. Deutsch, we also have the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Instruction. And as a part of that, every year, we have a best practices conference where the members of the Superintendent's Advisory Council on Instruction also sit on their school advisory councils. Those folks come together and share best practices from across all of our schools, not just what they're doing on advisory council, but what they are doing in collaboration with their school administration and teachers to improve the academic, social, emotional experiences of all of our students.
Ms. Saddlewhite?
Thank you, Mrs. Jesse. First, I just want to say, it is so awesome to see all of our principals here. And this is an amazing night, and it's a little bit intimidating, I have to say, to have all of you up here. But it's awesome to see all of your faces, and thank you for hanging in here with us tonight. I know it's a little bit long. It's exciting for me that we have a meeting tonight where we're focused on education and our students. And I know I'm really enjoying the questions and the answers tonight. Several of my questions are general and based on overall looking at the strategic plan. And first one, I know a lot of our measures are based on the SOLs because that's what we're given, that's what we're using still with the state. There have been a lot of changes the last few years with SOL testing. Is there a chart available online for parents to reference what tests their child will take and at what grade level?
Yes, there is. There is currently one online, and it looks like this. You can't read it. But if you go, and we'll provide it to all of you, but if you go under accountability to testing, there's a thing about test administered in Prince William County, and one says SOL test. And it provides a chart by grade level to show what students would take at each grade level, and then at the high school, which ones would be taken. It also has some notes to indicate when tests were eliminated, like the grade five writing test and some of those. That's all on this one-page document that's available on the public website.
I knew we probably had something like that. I just didn't know where we would have it.
You're right, because it does change, and so we keep that updated.
Okay, great, thank you. And I believe Mr. Trenum asked for this last meeting. I would really like to see five- and 10-year trend charts or graphs for the performance in math and reading, and if there have been test changes, like I know we've had in the past, just notate it so that we can see what's happening.
We're, we're working on that and highlighting when, because that's, then changes to the test is really important if you go back 10 years, because the reading test changed in 1213, and the math test changed in 1112. So you'll see, you know, a dip in performance as they raise the standards. And so we, I'm working on that right now for you, well, not literally right now, but we got that question this afternoon, so stay tuned, it's coming.
Okay, thank you. And then, which one am I going to? From reports I'm hearing from parents and teachers, math SOL testing is involving more and more a language base than it used to have with more word problems. And considering this, I'm wondering what kind of impact are we seeing with our EL students on the tests now compared to previous versions of the test? And my thought basis is if math is truly universal language, are we accurately measuring with our EL students their knowledge of math?
So here's a Reader's Digest, and there'll be more that would need to come to, you know, we can provide you in conjunction with Ms. Sodki and the English learner programs. But there clearly is still a language component to the test, but what I can tell you, and this gets at Mr. Trenum's other question about statistical significance. So our English learners actually showed a statistically significant increase in performance in mathematics from 1516 to 1617, and it was a two-point gain at the division. Right, all right. So, so our students are rising to that challenge, and that's something the state's aware of. There's been what they call a plain English mathematics test. That has not addressed the issue sufficiently, in our opinion. But that is, is something that people work on and focus on, but our students are improving performance. And then to get to the statistical significance question, it depends on the size of the group, and we can provide you a much more extensive one, but at the division level, you know, it can be as small as one to, one percentage point when you're looking at all students. But, for example, in reading, it was our English learners and our students with disabilities, actually, that showed statistically significant increases in performance from 1516 to 1617 when you look at the, the groups, you know, a five-point gain and a three-point gain respectively. When you look at the school level, those numbers need to be bigger because the sample size is smaller, particularly at elementary schools. And we're working on a response that can give you kind of some guiding ways. There's more to it than just the raw count. And if you want the full statistical nerdy explanation, give me a call, but we'll give you a summary of that. But when we look at the big picture, sometimes it can be 1% because you're moving a mountain, and it takes, to move a mountain a little bit is something statistically significant. You can have a discussion about practical also, but that, at the school level, it would be a, a larger gain required to meet that threshold.
Thank you. And it's been a long time since I did the statistical part in college, but sometime, yes, I like to have a conversation. Let's see. And the first presentation last meeting, slide 21, Strategic Measure 1.1.4, we were looking at the individual test, and Mr. Trenum, I believe, was talking about this, or somebody was talking about this. And I was wondering if, in addition to lumping everybody together with all the tasks and the percentage of graduates with a qualifying score, can we break down the individual test?
So, so you're looking at, just to clarify, we can't do that one for you on the fly, but the APIB in Cambridge, breaking it down by APIB, the type of test, APIB in Cambridge? Sure. And you'll see, of course, some, you know, we have only some schools offer some of those, but yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. And slide 22, Strategic Measure 1.5. I know this isn't specifically in our strategic plan, but our constituents are always asking for comparison with the SAT and ACT to our neighboring counties. And I know we might not want to really look at this, but could we have a chart that compares our SAT, ACT scores to neighboring counties? And, and then, you're talking about the number of seniors who are taking the tests. Can we look at percentages of students who are taking the tests for comparison basis?
We can certainly, I think, I mentioned before, we can certainly look at that in the benchmarking. We'd have to do some research, because what numbers people put out publicly related to the SAT are up to them. And so there are many different ways you can look at it. We report the numbers the way the college board does to be consistent with what the state reports, but we will look at that and look at the numbers. I know our, the larger jurisdictions do put those things out there, but we'll, we can look at that for SAT and ACT for some comparable jurisdictions, absolutely.
Okay. And along those lines, we talk about the number of students who've taken the SAT, ACT as seniors. Can we get the numbers, or the numbers of students who take it as juniors? And a lot of students will take it as juniors, they get their score they need, and like, okay, I'm done, I'm not doing this test again.
So that's a great question, and yes, we can. And so they, the college board numbers we report are, the score include graduating seniors and any score they got at any point in time. So not any score, their best score that they got at any point in time, that's, that's how they, the college board does it. But we can break out and show information for juniors and seniors, or even those early achievers who take it earlier than that.
Okay, thank you very much. And then another question that I wrote down, based on something somebody said. Could you, if the number is easily available, I know there are a lot of questions you're getting thrown at you tonight. What is the percentage of our students who do graduate after taking, or graduate with taking Algebra II? And we're talking about college readiness, talking about the testing to show college readiness, and Algebra II is a big factor with getting into college. I was wondering what, how many of our graduates actually do complete Algebra II before they graduate?
Sure, we can absolutely get you that information.
Thank you. And I think that is it for my questions. Thank you very much.
I get a turn. You know, I've been very nervous tonight about this particular meeting because I've been out there in the trenches, and I know what it's like. I recall getting a call when I was principal at Vaughn, had been there two or three years, and said, "You're on the front page of the Potomac News." And if you're any principal that's been around, your question is, "Why? It couldn't be good, and it wasn't." And it was because it said, "Lily Jesse, Vaughn Elementary, lowest math scores in the county." It was a wake-up call. When I walked into Vaughn, I had all the Lake Ridge kids. I had good scores. I was happy, everybody else was happy. Then all of a sudden, everything changed. But as a school, we didn't change. We continued teaching the same way we'd always taught, and that's how we landed on the front page. Someone asked about, "Do I have a SMART goal? Do we have a goal?" I have a slide, I think they have a slide coming up for me. Slide one, please. There it is. You know, our job is to teach the kids that we have, and I ask that every principal receive a copy of this. Not the ones that we like to have, not the ones we used to have, those that we have right now, all of them. So my SMART goal is all, every one of them. And I've heard a lot tonight about the wonderful things that we're doing, and I agree, I've been here long enough, and I've traveled throughout the United States and into Canada, and I've seen some low schools. I've seen 25%. I didn't think I could ever see 25%, but I saw it. No, we're not 25%. Our goal is world-class. My SMART goal to superintendent is to hold you to that mission, because every kid deserves to be world-class. And speaking of the kids that we want to have, I have a second slide, and she doesn't know this, it's Ms. Jessica Jesse. Seven months. I knew I had to read to her. I was never read to, I never had a book in my house. I lived in the South. Couldn't go to the library. So I know all kids can learn, that's why I'm here. What's my SMART goal is to be here and to make a difference. So I will ask some of the hard questions. I personally invited principals because I know what it's like. In 1977, Edmonds Report, and it told us that kids in these low-income neighborhoods couldn't learn, and he found them. If you go to Education Trust, you'll find hundreds of buildings. If you find, if you look at the research, you'll find there are lots of buildings that have low-income kids, transient kids who are learning at high levels. And I will say to you guys, if you don't look at the hard stuff tonight, I feel like we're in this love fest tonight, but if you don't look at your current reality and everybody's bad-mouthing data, it's what kind of data you're looking at. If teachers are being required to look at data that does not help them with instruction, it's a waste of time. And I have a feeling there's some of that, because I was guilty. We looked at data, but it, we didn't get to where we wanted to go, but we got better because we were stopping, saying, "Where are we?" Now, Thanksgiving is coming, and you're thinking, "She's off her rocker now." If many, how many of you have parents and grandparents who make sweet potato pies and they don't use a recipe? How many people really have parents, grandparents, they just make the pie? They don't use a recipe? But they have this little dipstick. You taste along the way. And that's what formative assessment is. You can't just wait until the pie comes out. That's summative. You've got to look at the dipsticks along the way. And Marzano's research says, if you look at where you are and you dipstick along the way, you're going to improve. And also, I know that PWA talks about About Time. And I'm not here to brag about anything because people know what I've done, and that's why I'm on this board. But I wrote an anthology in the book About Time, and it's about time that teachers need to look at data, to look at where they are, and make course adjustments as they go. And Prince William County provides more time than I've been able to find over the United States. And I've done a lot of workshops, and people talk about having maybe two days a week or whatever. You have hours to look at data or to look at where you are. Teachers, when they get together, and you say we're PLC, a real PLC, they're looking to say, "How are we doing? Analyze," if the word is analyze, "do we all agree as a team that this is what analyze means to us?" And what we all, would all of us agree, interdependence, that's going to be what we will accept as a grade level, as mastery, and we're all on the same page. So we talk about best practices, and we have to be into the research. We are academians. We have to be in the research. Slide number three, please. Next slide. Jessica's getting ready to fall over with the book. I am just, when I left this county, I came up to Dr. Walt's office and I gave him a purple notebook, and I said to him, "We have too much to do." When they moved from instruction, from being administrators to instructional leadership, they didn't give us more time, they just gave us more things to do. So you have to make the main thing the main thing, and I do have some questions, but I just want to share with you tonight that I've been there and that it can be done. And we say we're world-class, we're on the way, but we're not there. We've got some data things that we really need to look at and look at seriously. John Hattie, what works? Millions of kids, over 30 years of data. Last week, they decided sorbines doesn't work or something, I don't know, sorbines are out. But that's one piece of data. What we, I want to know is whether or not down the road, we're going to have the real data where they've got 25 years of work of data, they've got millions of kids that they've looked at, and it says, "This is what works." And I just want to know when, as a county, I'm willing to provide the resources or try to provide the resources to help principals and help teachers get the training that they need? Because I went, when I was on the SOL Committee, and I talked to, very few teachers showed up, but one of the teachers said to me, "My principal came and did my observation, said, 'Okay, I want to see some rigor.'" Do we even know what rigor looks like? We've got to define rigor. And a lot of our teachers are not trained coming out of universities to know what this deep thinking we keep asking for, this deep learning that we're asking for. So you can, John Hattie has a book, the next slide, please. Point four, by the way, run back to the other slide, please. Point four, here in this middle area, when it works, the fact size is point four. So if you're on the left side, the activities, he's looked at thousands of things, those are things that he finds does not work. You have to be point four and above that works. But he finds that very few things teachers do. This particular video on him is called "What Teachers Do," and what they do to make things work, and why things work. And that's what we should be sharing with them, so go to the next slide. So we have to have a point four. The number one thing that worked is teacher and student self-efficacy, is belief in self. If you don't believe that a child who comes from a certain background can learn or has the ability, nothing's going to happen. And so we talk about the multicultural training, I don't know where that's going to go, but this whole belief in the ability of all children to learn at high levels. It has to be said, and as principals, it has to come from you. If you say, "Oh, he's from those apartments, oh, look at those kids we got," it has to come from us. Teachers working together as evaluators of their impact, point nine-three, number one, where teachers sit down and say, "How are we doing? What are we going to do next?" That's what a PLC is about. PLCs are not about having a collaborative meeting necessarily, it is about that, but it's about interdependence because, guys, there are too many objectives to teach. This whole concept of interdependence in the professional learning communities that we've adopted, we need to train people and make it a priority, and as a board, we need to fund it so that they can be trained on how to work with groups. I put my teachers in a group and realized I knew nothing about putting people in groups, and I had to learn. The next one is power of moving from what students know towards explicit criteria, from the known to the unknown. These kids who are coming in with these small, who come from backgrounds like mine, where you just had dialect, and you were afraid to talk at school, you have to embrace what they know. Number four, errors and trust, trust are welcome as opportunities to learn instead of saying it's a problem. Getting to deep learning. I had a teacher, and I see Mrs. McDonald is here, and McDonald, I call her McDonald, I'm sorry, but McDonald had a thing in third grade, and she would say, "Prove your answer, prove your answer, prove your answer." They had to tell her why the answer was correct. And when kids can do that, it's not going to cost us a lot of money, guys, and it's kind of, I just know you're working your rear ends off. And justify your answer, and the Goldilocks principle of delivery challenge. Now, I see PWA here, and I'm going to tell you that class reduction is a point two-one. Now, am I talking about class reduction as a bad thing for us? No. There's a number. When a teacher gets more than 25 or 30 kids, you better not go down the hall as a principal. You know it, you all know it. So he says point two-one, but I say that it means a lot more, so I'm not here to bash it. I'm just saying that we need to also invest money in these other things. And then the next slide, one or two, and then I have a couple of questions. The three big ideas in a PLC are the following. Focus on learning and not on what they taught. They taught it, they didn't get it, we got to reteach. Interdependence and focus on results. Last, I think there's one more. Do what works. These are, why we're doing PLC, this is why. It's something that works, it's research-based by researchers. These are all the people who've done hundreds of years of research, they know what works. And then I call it the personal observation as a principal. And number seven, the next slide, please. These are the organizations. So if we know that this thing works, and all of us should be doing it, I, my question is, what are the non-negotiables? And we have to have Dr. Walt's and to Rita, and I talked to you about it. What are the non-negotiables? I had sight base, I could do anything I wanted to do, but if you're in a hospital and you knew that this was the cure for cancer, and you had to do certain things that worked, and you're not funding them, and it's our job to fund things that work for you. And that's why I invited you here tonight, I invited you here to say, "Yeah, we invited you, why are you here? I wanted them here, I want the principals here." Because we talk about things, and plus, some principals have been told, "I'm doing stuff that I haven't done," so I didn't say that. So this is what I'm all about. What's my SMART goal is that all these kids learn, and that we talk about the good, the bad, and the ugly. So I want to talk a little bit about, we've talked about all the good stuff, I want to talk a little about the ugly. The not-so-good. So I'd like to have slide nine from the other, you can take these slides down. While they're trying to find slide nine in the first, we have a gap. The NAACP had a whole Saturday on the gap. African-Americans, lower-income students, you disaggregate that data, they seriously want us to close the gap. They want to know what is going to be our SMART goal for closing the gap. Nine from the original, you said you had that? Thank you. What are we going to do to close the gap? Yeah, we're doing pretty good, but there are other counties, local counties, that are doing better than us. So what's, what's our plan to improve on that level? We are, there are six counties above us, and for five years, I've been on the board, and I've come in, and we, we look at it and we say, "Yeah, but, yeah, but..." But what's happening, and I want the principals to see this, because we're not, we're doing great, guys. I'm not here to beat up on you, but, but it sounds like it, huh? A little bit. What I'm saying to you guys is this, we have got to get better at certain things. What are we doing great? We're doing, we're above the state, we're above many places, but when we talk about being world-class, I'm just asking, can we move from being great to world-class? And I don't want you to feel that, that's what I'm going to talk about. It's just, I want to see that we look at the gap and that we look at where we are, and that we work smart, and that the things that I want to talk about are the things that I think we can support you guys with, and then you can ask us, "Look, we need more of this." I have always felt you needed more coaches, so I put in for more coaches, and I think everybody on the board did that. Because when, when everybody comes up on the board and we show the slides that says we're doing great, then we can't fund anything else because we say we're really doing great. So this is one slide. These are our gaps. Slide 13. These are our gaps. Slide 15. These are our gaps. Slide 17. Eighteen, nineteen, nineteen. Go back, please. The gap, our ESL, 26, 24, and our special ed kids, we have a 32-point gap. My belief is that if we can spend money to perhaps look at reading a little bit differently, I was looking at the Title I reading, if we could, if you could give us a plan with the principals of saying, "Okay, I've got a gap here, the budget is coming up." When everybody says we're doing great, and then we ask for money, it's hard to do that. So I'm asking you, in your SMART goals or whatever you want to call it, if you could look at a way for us to support you, and the John Hattie material, you can find the video, if you want a copy of the video, I think it's a good video to show your staff because it's going to show teachers, "Yeah, you're working really hard, but we need to really work smart, and here's some information on how you can do that." Slide 19. These are our gaps. We're looking at different groups of people and where we are. I don't know what Stafford, all of a sudden Stafford is doing. And some of you will walk out of here tonight and say, "Why did she tell us all of this?" Because the only way I got better was dealing with my current reality, and I know principals out there who are doing it. They're looking at data all the time, and I'm just asking you to not be afraid to look at good data, but I'm asking you not to, you send data up to us, we ask you for stuff. I'm asking you not to ask teachers to engage in a lot of data collection that comes to us, but it doesn't help them. Find ways, and I'm told you guys have great measures now, a lot better when I was out there. I would like to see that teachers are working really hard, and I know you guys are working really hard. And so my question is, if you have, if you would admit to us, "We've got some gaps here, and here's some things that we need," and I'd like to hear from the principals, and I know you tell Rita, I mean, Mrs. Goss, I'm sorry, Ms. Goss. And I talked to Ms. Goss and Ms. Hart on Saturday at the Closing the Gap meeting, and they told this group, "We're going to work on closing the gaps." And so I'm here for that. On Sunday, I went to a church, and they talked about the prison, high school to prison pipeline, it's real. And you know what it all around, and it's African-American boys mostly, we all know that. You know what it's surrounded about? It's surrounded with literacy. These kids are reading at a fifth or a sixth grade level, and some people question this, but it's said that we decide, prisons decide on their bedside based on third-grade reading When I look at high schools, and I'm learning a lot about high schools, I just think that we need more reading teachers above fourth grade, we need more reading teachers at the high school level to teach reading in the content area, because we teach reading K3. And then four, we stop teaching. And when you look at our Title I schools, we're really not where we need to be with Title I schools, especially in the area of reading. So if you walk away tonight and say, "She was mean to us," I don't mean to be mean to you, but I have to tell you, we have to accept our current reality. And the question I have on the board, the college board, Jennifer, the college board, do you have that disaggregated?
You mean the SAT scores?
You know, the college board that says 480 and 530 is a thousand SAT, we can make a B.
Oh, the college board's...
Yeah, that slide. I don't know what the slide is.
I can disaggregate that, that was our calculation based on their threshold, so we can do that. I don't have it at my fingertips, but we can do that, certainly.
Because they dropped it from 1,500 with the new SAT to 1,010?
They didn't drop it because it's a completely new, it's a new metric, so it's starting over, and so it's, it wasn't a decrease, it's, the test is fundamentally different, so it's the, the scale looks the same, but it's done differently, so they established new starting point benchmarks, and so this is where they said it. It wasn't a lowering, they completely changed it.
Yeah, I know they changed the SAT, but let me ask you this question, so help me out. When you have 1,010 on the SAT, does that equate to a higher level on the old SAT? Because I know they've combined reading and writing.
So the old, the old SAT had three components with three different scores, so it was 1,550 out of the 2,400, and so this is back to a 1,600 scale. So most of us who took, who are standing here or sitting here who took the SAT were on a 1,600 before, but it's completely different now. So the equating, I can't speak to whether it's higher or lower, it's just fundamentally different, which is why we started. They even only release new information now and are not doing trends because they established that based on... that based on one year's worth of scores. Because they changed the content of the test. So it's, the reading and writing is one component now. It's not two separate scores. So there's only two scores students get, a math and a reading/writing together. And they're calling it evidence-based reading and writing because that's where the more substantial changes happened.
So I guess my question, I think that Mr. Trinum had a question. But my question is, so if you have a thousand SAT on, on this new scale, would that mean that you would still be able to get into something like Virginia Tech?
So I don't know the answer to that offhand. Again, everybody's still reacting to the new SAT and a lot of colleges are looking at that differently and in combination with other things. But we're dealing with a whole new, a whole new way. By next year, we'll have more to be able to look at how that's playing out.
Ms. Jesse, one of the ways we communicate that information to people in our community in terms of SAT scores to shoot for, parents, students, is we use last year's graduation cohort or the available data that we have. We publish that in the high school course catalog every year. And then we do collections of universities. And we will identify the most selective or elite colleges and universities who have the highest SAT, average SAT score for Prince William County graduation cohort, all the way down to lesser selective schools. So parents and students can find a school that fits their circumstances in any given year. And that, that is part of the counseling that we do with students to make sure that everybody knows there's something for, for everybody. And, you know, including picking up some remedial classes if, if they find themselves in a position.
The final thing I wanted to say to the high school principals. I've learned a lot. I know when I don't know. I don't know high school. But I've learned a lot. And I have to tell you, when I went over to Potomac High School and saw those welders, it changed my thinking. Because you're right, I was like, let's send these kids to college. I was college, college, college. And then I watched the skill sets of these kids with the welding. And I started to think, if we're world-class and we want, I would like to see our kids graduate and either head to college or either have a skill set. That's what I'd like to see. That's just my goal. And I know it's a big goal, but when these kids are on the streets, they're nothing but trouble. And so I, when I was talking to, I think it was Ken and it was Mr. Wright. And he said, I said, what, what do we need? And he said, we need somebody pretty much like, we're doing this amazing job with business partnerships. And so we have one person that goes out and does that. I would like to see us hire somebody to go out and talk about apprenticeships and talk about different skill sets that these kids can get, some of the things that you were talking about with, at many of these technology firms like, my husband used to work for Lockheed. And Lockheed, and they're telling us that our kids are not graduating with the skill sets necessary. There are jobs that our kids can't get. So I would like for us, to see us do that. And I would like to see us fund that. And I would like to just fund you. But it's a different slant. And from other people on this board that came up tonight, I'm not, I just want to know what it is that you need to fill the gaps, not just for the minority kids. Because we know that kids, kids can, we, in, in the world of professional learning communities, you accelerate instead of remediate. You move fast. And you see some high-performing kids. And our kids can hit these high-performance goals, but they are going to need some support. And we're going to have to get more program. So Dr. Walz, I think what we need to be world-class, we need world-class funding. We need world-class funding. And we should not be afraid to ask for it. But we do need to look at what is our current reality. Thank you. Ms. Williams?
Okay, I think we're doing twizzies. Do we let the principals go?
Do you have questions for the principals?
No, I don't.
Does anyone have any more questions for principals? I want to thank you all for coming. If you want to stay in here, when I was a principal, I never came to these things. But in this world of accountability, we all have to work together. Thank you so much. And please let me come back in your schools.
Thank you for coming. I do have a couple of follow-up questions. The first thing I wanted to say is, all the questions that are asked tonight and their responses, I'm wondering if we could put together some sort of link so that the public can go back and read and digest at their own leisure, since it's public information and it's just another, not immediately, because I know that that's something it would take a while to do if we set up a page or something like that. Like, I know we do like a budget season and they have their own page. But something like that, because this is a lot of information. And I think that we, as a board, ask for public comment and involvement in what we do. And this is a very important part of what we do. And if there is anybody who is nerdy like me that would actually go there and read it if I wasn't on the board, you know, I want to make sure that we have that available to the public. And everyone's just not auditory-based or can follow along quite as fast, because even sometimes I get lost up here. So I want to go back to one of the things that I heard in regards to assisting our learners being college-ready. And someone brought up EIP, which of course I love because I'm an alumni. But it is really for first-time in your family, students going to college. And even with that, it's a very comprehensive program. But if you've never been to college, there's still a lot of things that are missing from that. And I'm wondering, really, this is more counselor-based. So what are we doing for our counselors? Because I'm noticing over the past few years that there's some inconsistencies in what counselors are knowledgeable about based upon what parents are asking. And, and our educational world is changing very quickly. And so I'm wondering what we do, what are we doing to support our counselors, to encourage them to have our students shoot for higher expectations instead of lower? Because I know myself as a parent, I've run into that. And especially being a parent of a minority student, I'm especially more sensitive to that. And when I talk to some of the parents of minority students, I'm noticing that a common occurrence that our, our children are not necessarily being pushed towards higher or more rigorous courses. And I would assume that that would also translate to numbers down the road and gap issues. So I'm wondering what type of training or encouragement that our counselors are getting that could be, if we don't have it now, if we could implement something that's division-wide so they're all on the same page? And I know that's a large challenge because we are a large school division. But I think the woman who came here earlier, that's a very good example, homeschooling. It might be something that's new this year that maybe that one particular counselor didn't know about. Because I'm not saying we don't do a good job, but we're a large school division. And we spend a lot of time, like Lucy said, we do all of these different committees and professional community, learning communities. And there's just a lot to digest. And I, and we don't talk about counselors often up here. And we don't talk about the needs that they have and how the impact they have in student learning. So I just want to make sure that we're supporting them and that in turn, they're able to support our students in a way that's world-class. And you don't have to answer these questions now. And then also, I, I heard the middle, we were talking about having our, our students career-ready. And there was a mention that we are starting elementary career portfolios. And someone mentioned that there's a middle, a middle school career path or something. Okay. Never saw that as, not saying that I, just because I didn't see that, it didn't happen. But like, middle schoolers are typically known for things not coming home or getting lost in shoes or, you know, whatever they do after having one. Who knows? But I was wondering if there's some type of way that we could market better to the parents, that this is information that is coming home? Because I think that we do an excellent job at the elementary school level of shoving information constantly. At the middle school level, we kind of push back, which is understandable because we want our students to take some onus to it. But I think also, because we do so much and we have so many programs and we offer so much, every now and again, it might be good to like, just market it in a different way. Hey, on the school website, because I know a lot of parents are still used to, especially sixth and seventh grade parents, that habit of checking the school website to say, oh, this is the time of year we're doing this. Have you seen this come home from your student? And not in a student folder, but more like a generic place that parents would have access to, if that makes sense. And then I'm going to go back to the special education students and the, the topic of that. My, one, one thing I failed to mention earlier, and I think that we should always be mindful of now, is that, and I'm guilty too, a lot of times when we talk about special education up here, I think of a more traditional sense of a special education. And even in my world, like, that's just not the case anymore. Like, I am related to have special education students that are near and dear to my heart that are not even, they're mainstream students. So I'm wondering what type of professional development or training that our, our mainstream teachers have to recognize issues that are key to their special education students that maybe could cut down on classroom disruptions or referrals or things of that nature? And I'm just going to, like, as an example, I know of a student who has anxiety issues. So he has to leave class, you know, he starts packing up five minutes before the bell rings. And it's not an offense to the teacher. It's literally something he can't help himself from doing. But one thing I noticed is the teacher was like, oh, well, I didn't know and I was taking... And it's so much that we ask of our teachers. So I'm wondering if there's maybe a set aside or maybe in the summertime when we're getting ready to go back to school, if there's some sort of acknowledgement or a note to teachers to say, hey, you know, now we have a large cohort of special education students in mainstream education, you know, do you know how to read IEP? Are we taking time to, to tell them or to get them prepared for having students who are special education in their class, specifically at the high school level? Because I know that's a much different dynamic than middle school or elementary where there's a lot more cross-sharing going on of the same student from teacher to teacher. And in high school, that may not be the case. And our teachers and staff are, you know, I know we throw a lot of information at them, but I, I think that that's something as time goes on, we'll see more and more of. So if we don't have something, it might be a good time to start or, or to try to figure out how we can improve that based upon the fact that we are so large. So that, those are my two main things.
And we can provide information about both of those things. There's some exciting things going on with counselors. And certainly there's training in, in new and different ways related to the last question we can get.
And I absolutely know. I have spoken to Ms. Goss for several years now about like, especially transitioning from middle to high school and things like that. So I know that we do great things, but I don't always know that our parents know. So I'm asking on behalf of the public to, and these are things that you don't have to answer right now, definitely would look for our responses. And that's the other question I had, is we sent questions to the clerks, some of us. I know I did one question. If we could get those responses posted as well? Because I know that we do a good job internally of informing us as the board. But I think that these are also, this is also the type of information that we get from, questions from throughout the year for our parents. And they could, you know, view it at their leisure.
Absolutely.
And that's all I had. Thank you.
Think we can let Jennifer leave? Anymore? Anymore? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jennifer?
Yes, ma'am.
You're getting so good at this.
Yes. I'm sorry.
I just want you to know that you, you make a story out of data. I, I just want to thank you. I also want to thank Rita, Ms. Goss, for everything and to all the people out of here. And to say to all of you that if we want to get busy about moving on to where we want to go, we have to admit to where we are and ask for the money. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I caused this.
Yes, you did.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can you explain to me, when we talk about closing, you know, the achievement gap, do we have a ceiling each year or each, every two years? What are we trying, what's the number we're trying to reach? Now, don't say a hundred, because I'll be dead and buried and forgotten. So what is the number that next year you would like to see or the year after?
Okay. So there is not a single number because there's a variety of gaps, right? So each way you look at, every time there's a difference in performance between two groups, there's a gap. And so you want to reduce those. And ideally, you want to reduce those to go back to the question about statistical significance. You want it to be a meaningful reduction. We were setting targets, trying to increase performance of students with disabilities by five, 10%. You're trying to set it based on where you are, right? So each school is in a different place, so their targets are going to be different. The division's in a different place. You could see we had significant gains for our English learners, which reduces the gap. But that's only step one. So if you continue those things over time, the gaps reduce. The struggle also is you do not want to set a ceiling for the performance of the group to which you're comparing. So you want improvement in both groups, but you want improvement faster for the group that's behind. And so it's hard to set a number other than you want it to be meaningful and not go back and forth. You want it to be something that represents real change. And it depends on where, where you are. Because if you're at a lower point, you want there to be more change because it's not acceptable to be at a 50% pass rate, right? So that's, that's the challenge.
So you determine that as you read the data every time, right?
Absolutely. So we do that as a division. And then that gets done by principals in their school and set targets that are based on where they are and make targets for improvement that are meaningful and specific to the needs in their buildings.
Very good. Thank you.
I did want to share something that I was talking to one of the principals. And they were talking to me about the fact that they're not only looking at, when I did, it was a balanced report card, I think it was called, the balanced report card?
Balanced scorecard.
Yeah. And that they are looking at, at their gaps. And I think if this is our priority, we need to fund it. We need to find ways of, of looking at the personnel, the professional development needs and making it a priority and go ahead and fund it. Because they, they're just, it's flat right now. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
This time.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Jesse.
All you guys are leaving? It was so much fun.
Thank you. Much of tonight's meeting and our previous session focused on successes in achieving the school board's 2017, 18 goals for me and for the school division. While you've heard a lot more information tonight, I think it's appropriate to celebrate a specific achievement. As you know, we're proud of our overall on-time graduation rate for all students. But it is noteworthy to point out that the on-time graduation rate for black students in Prince William County rose from 91.8 last year to 92.7% in 2017. That's 92.7% compared with a rate of 88.4% statewide. Among Northern Virginia divisions, it exceeds black student performance in Fairfax. I highlight it because it reveals remarkable success among our students and is a result of a great job by our administrators and our teachers. Another goal of the school board was the development of action plans based on the spring 2017 reports received from the superintendent's Advisory Council on Instruction, the Special Education Advisory Council, and the Gifted Advisory Council. As directed by the school board, these plans were submitted prior to the November 1st, 2017 deadline. Congratulations to school board vice chairman Lily Jesse on her induction to the Prince William Walk of Fame. This honor recognizes the people of Prince William County who have gone above and beyond in their contributions to the quality of life in our community. Mrs. Jesse will be honored with a permanent installation of a plaque on the grounds of Tackett's Mill at Lakewood. Finally, congratulations to the PWCS Budget Office on receiving the Meritorious Budget Award from the Association of School Business Officials International. This honor recognizes excellence in school budget presentations and is given only to school divisions. school divisions with budgets that undergo rigorous review by financial professionals and meet or exceed the program's stringent criteria. It reflects the extensive effort that goes on into making sure our community is getting its money's worth for its investment in education. Thank you.
The 1601, the multicultural training for school board members, it has been moved by Justin Wilk?
It was on for discussion.
It was on, it was on the consent agenda, and now it's up for discussion or action. So, it, we want to move this for action for Mr. Wilk, because he's, I'm sorry, the only reason I'm, because I was told that it was Mr. Deutsch.
Should I give a background?
You need to second for discussion.
Madam Vice Chair, I second whatever it is, so he can speak.
We haven't had a motion yet.
Okay. Motion.
That the Prince William County School Board attend multicultural training on a date to be determined?
Okay.
Okay.
I second.
Who is, who's, who, who's the first? Who's? I don't want to be the first.
I technically, the idea, I'll make the motion, then we can, since you moved it here.
You're going to first?
Yes.
Okay, good. And, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, no, I'm.
Okay. And second?
I second.
Diane? Discussion?
Yeah, just for context, so, I, I know, I didn't want to make this too complicated, but as we've been hearing the last couple of weeks, and going back to some of the general items that have been brought back up, that have happened in our high schools going back to last year, there's been a push and a growing need that some have felt that we need to adopt whatever we're going to call it. And I know, board members, overall, I just summed it up as multicultural training. And despite a lot of what, you know, was being spoken, last board meeting during citizens' comment time, as I mentioned, the administration had already been working on it, a process, and, and there's a whole module system, and there's basically, we're moving forward with that, at least that is my understanding, and we can get clarification on that. And it was something I really pushed and wanted to do. And my only thing was, by moving it to consent, I thought it would be good for the board, beneficial for the board, that we did a version of it, whatever, or whatever's going to be piloted out to our schools and our teachers, that we as a board go through the process ourselves for the experience. That's all I was doing, and that's why originally it was consent, because that's, I thought, okay, give Ms. Urban and Ms. Simpson the approval to go forward and try to coordinate schedules, all that fun stuff we had before. And so, that's why it was consent. And then I spoke with Mr. Deutsch, and he had some other ideas, and this is why, and I'll, I won't speak for him, so I'll, I'll stop there. That was the context of why I did it, and the background to it.
Was it, were you first, or? I'm going to go with Ms. Williams and then Mr. Deutsch.
Okay, so, just for clarification, Mr. Wilk, are you asking us to take multicultural training, or are you asking us to participate in the cultural competency training that the school division is hosting? The superintendent said there was a board component.
What, you were just, the?
The cultural competency.
Yes, sorry, I just.
And I'm sorry, I don't, I don't mean to be so.
No, no, it's okay, I was very vague in my wording of it, yes.
And the reason why I'm, I'm bringing this up is because there is a legitimate difference between, and I have said this a lot now, since this seems to be the theme, but I want to make sure the public understands, and, and fellow board members, there is a definite difference between diversity training, multicultural training, and cultural competency training, because I'm hearing a lot from the public now, that, and bullying. People want to lump all of those things together, and it's not the same. Racism is not bullying, and cult, understanding one's culture is not the same as diversity training. So, I just want to make sure that we are clear on what it is that we're going to be trained on, and the public also understands what it is that we're talking about, because I believe that, I, I support this, obviously, wholeheartedly, but I definitely believe that there's a difference between cultural competency training and diversity training, which I know that we already offer as a division. So, I want to make sure that publicly, they know, and also as board members, that we're on the same page, speaking the same language about it. But I definitely support your, your motion.
Sure, I think, that's fine. I guess, from my, from my perspective, I think it's, I think it's, well, let me step back for a second. We impose lots of stuff on our staff and the board. I do not think it is unreasonable to expect us to participate in something that we're going to ask our staff to do on occasion. So, I support it from that perspective.
Ms. Ross.
Thank you. That's good that you explained the difference, because my thing is, you know, I would hope that we could get around to what I had asked for two years ago. But it's obvious that maybe we're not all real clear on a multicultural diversity training. And I think that the district needs it. I think that we as board members need it. We, we have got to understand where we stand right now, and stop looking at our community, and at our students, and then applying a label to them. I'm not saying that we up here are necessarily doing that. But our expectations are kind of low. And I just think that we need that training. Now, I don't care if it's the competency or the diversity, but I do believe diversity is definitely needed. And I will go for just the board doing the competence.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Thank you. I, I agree with the, the intent, and I think especially agreeing with Mr. Trenum, that if we're requiring this of teachers, we should go through it with this ourselves. Just thinking through the logistics, led me to talk with Mr. Wilk. And I would like to offer an amendment that the Prince William County School Board be given access to the training modules to go through them on their own time. Because I think there are a lot of logistical issues.
It's not online training.
I was told these were modules that the teachers have access to?
It's part of it. But true cultural competency training is not an online, just online training, and it cannot be done just as online, and you need additional support embedded in that training. This is why, like, they have coaches in their classes, I'm sorry to speak out of turn, but it's really important that that's an understood factor. That's what, one of the things that the term that differentiates cultural competency training from diversity training. You really need a support there to answer the questions, because it's different.
My parliamentarian?
Sorry.
Has informed me that we need to vote on the amendment.
Vote person has to be stated.
You have to write your amendment. Don't you love this?
It's like a referral form.
Wait, so what?
Write your motion, Madam. Is there a proposal for the board? So, we already have access to what you're trying to?
Madam Vice Chair?
I just.
Hold on. The parliamentarian, we have a parliamentarian now? And he is, parliament, I think I'll let you speak. Thank you.
Before there can be debate on a motion as an amendment here, it has to be stated by the chair, which means that it has, the language has to be clear, and the practice here has been to require a second as well. Only after it's been stated by the chair, as who's moved in second, then it's open to debate, not before the amendment itself is before the body.
Okay, we're going to have to write this in. It, okay. The Prince William County School Board, I can't read it. Be, be given access to the training modules to review their own time?
On their own time.
To review, on their own time?
Is this a substitute for the pending motion? Ask him, is this a substitute for the pending motion?
Okay. Is there a substitute for, is this a substitute for the pending motion?
Yeah, there's a amendment in nature of substitute.
Okay. So, is there a second? Is there a second?
Is there a second?
Madam Chairwoman, I'll second that. Madam Vice Chair.
She seconded it.
Okay, now we have to change the language in here.
Well, you don't change it yet, because you have to add an extra motion, because this is still pending.
I know, I've got to add an extra motion.
So, I'm told that this will stay, and you can cut this out, and then just type any, or if you'd like, I can quickly type it.
I can type, I can type, if I can read it. You want to read it? Yeah, I can't read this, write it, I'm sorry. I'd like to read these. It has been moved and seconded that, ladies. It has been moved and seconded that the Prince William County School Board be given access to the training modules to review on their own time.
Is there debate?
Okay.
Is there debate on the substance?
Okay, now, discussion?
And seconded by Saddle White. Got it?
Okay.
Mr. Deutsch should be recognized as the maker of motion. Mr. Deutsch should be seeking recognition as the maker of the motion.
I'm sorry?
Mr. Deutsch to speak.
Okay. Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'm just offering this amendment to be able to kind of simplify and facilitate things. Trying, we're starting to enter the holiday season now, and trying to lock down a date where all of us can be together is going to be complicated. I know, we've had other times where we're trying to facilitate times for the whole board to be together, and it's taken extensive periods of time. So, they're all modules that we can review, and I think they're definitely be useful and beneficial for us to do so, and just trying to enable us to do it as simply and quickly as possible.
I think that's a great idea, but it also misses the point of cultural competency training. You can't do it in isolation. So, diversity training, you absolutely can do. You can review 100 slides, and you can learn, and you can take some tests. But when it comes to cultural competency, you need people there, and you need to do it in person, and it doesn't necessarily need to be done, in my opinion, thoroughly and well, so that everybody's on the same page and they understand. Because when you read a slide, it's still open to interpretation, and it's a very sensitive subject. And the point is, to really understand, learn, and grow. I just can't imagine how it could be done thoroughly, to the best of our understandings, that we can all learn, if it's done individually, just online. I don't, I'm not familiar with that. And it's also something that we don't have to complete at one time tomorrow. I mean, to be true to its nature, and my understanding, cultural competency is, is an ongoing lifelong thing, which is why, as a division, we've invested money in having coaches in our schools, embedded in our schools on a permanent basis. It's not a one-and-done type of a situation. And even if it takes six months or three months for us to all get together on the same page, right now, what I'm hearing from the board members here is that we have support, but we, you know, not necessarily support because we want to learn about other people's cultures, but we also have support because we're asking the staff to do it. So, to me, that, personally, that's a red flag. So, I mean, I think that that's something that we should take time, we should definitely do as a group, because that's really what it's about, is learning from each other, and learning how different cultures interact. And if it's something that we are leaders of the community, we should really take time and invest and do it, especially considering our magisterial districts are changing every day. And we are now a minority-majority county, and that's only going to continue to spread. And if we don't have this training for ourselves, what type of example are we setting for our staff if we're not taking it seriously, and we're just asking it to be done online? Our staff is not asking it just to be done online, there's going to be people in the building. This is an ongoing situation. So, I, it doesn't matter to me if we do it in January, or if we do it in March, or if we do it in June. As long as we do it as a group, and together, and thoroughly, I think that that's really the point of the training and what we're being asked to do. Because it's not bullying training, and it's not about respecting people because they're different. It's about learning how to interact with different cultures, and how we interact with each other, and understanding our own lens and point of privilege when we interact with people. So, that's a big deal.
Mr., I would like to ask a question before.
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Walz, could you explain to me, I'm hearing different things about the training. I'm hearing some people are being trained by modules, I'm hearing some people that they're coaches. Do we even know what this competency, cultural diversity training is going to look like as a board?
Yes, the training was laid out in the Friday packet, a week ago Friday. It consists of several modules that have been developed by UVA. And then, following that, there's a trainer of trainers model, so there will be personnel who will be also facilitating face-to-face training in the schools as well. Ms. Goss, did you want to add anything?
So, the modules serve to really lay the foundation around building positive relationships and creating opportunities through relationships. And then, each one of our schools has a designated culturally aware and responsive educator, who, that person's going to take the lead in the training at the schools. The training at the schools will be follow-up conversations, really aimed at trying to provide tools and strategies for staff on how to interrupt patterns of inequity. In other words, deal with those behaviors and communications, some refer to that as microaggressions, that many of you are concerned about, and our community is concerned about. And so, that's really the follow-up piece. Of course, those modules are a follow-up to even the triple E that we had this summer, where we had Dr. Noguera, and he taught to us about the foundation being around relationships, and how we build relationships with our students, our families. So, it's really a continuous evolution of that. And it would not be a one-and-done this year, so it would be ongoing, and we would continue to build on this training.
I guess I have a question. If this, if the training is going to be done at the school, can members of the board sit in on the training at the school?
I think that would be.
I'm just, is that?
Why not?
Yeah, I'm just asking, would that be possible for members, would, at a school, we'd get a schedule, and for example, I went into one of my schools, and I wanted and I wanted to sit in on the training with them as a board member?
So I believe all things are possible. I think it's important for us to consider, right, that these frank conversations about topics that are often uncomfortable for some people, it may add a level of reserve to the people participating in that if their supervisors or this esteemed board sits in on that.
I recall when Larry Bell and who was Bullock came to our schools and did the training. All of us sat in on the training, the principal, everybody, because they were aware that there were people in the room and it added to the conversation. But I do understand what you're saying. I understand that. Okay, so is there? Okay, I think you were next and then she's next and then you. Thank you.
I just have a question.
I just wanna clarify that what we're about to vote on, Mr. Deutsch, what you're asking is to replace what is existence and just do the online module training for board members and not the complete training that we have access to. That's what you're asking us to vote on.
Actually, yeah. I think the clarifications from Ms. Goss, I'm not sure what the role of a specific trainer for the school board is because the trainer that she was referring to was talking about how you get the school communities to improve things in that specific community. And so having, there isn't really any defined function for what that trainer would be, both who that person would be and what their purpose would be in terms of that training we'd have as a school board.
I think it's defined and I also, before Dr. Walts, I'm sorry, I'm really passionate about this because I actually went to school for it and I think that that question shows why we need this thorough training. Because it is a different type of training. It's not learn how to do word processing. Like I said, it's not diversity training. There's several books out there. There's definitely an emotional component to this training because it asks people to really look introspectively at themselves and to examine things that most people don't want to examine. And as I mentioned before, just the simple fact that we have two board members up here who are asking to do the training based because we're asking our staff and not out of need. And this is a real issue in this community. I mean, we are really dealing with a lot of different cultures and it's not as simple as learning that this person wears this or this person wears that. So that's why I'm being so adamant and so aggressive about this is because it's a different type of training. Most of the board members up here are not familiar with it and I could tell that just from the terminology that we use when we talk about it. So it's really important and if we're gonna do it because our staff is gonna do it, we should really take the time to learn about what it is that we're asking them to do too.
Mr.? It's Dr. Walts. I've been reminded by the parliamentarian that we can't just speak, you have to wait to be recognized. Please. Dr. Walts.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Notwithstanding the opinion of Ms. Goss, I do wanna answer your question directly. Yes, board members could take the full component of the online and participate in a school. I'm not promoting it or discouraging it, I'm saying yes, you can.
Mr. Trenna?
So my, actually, is just a point of clarification just because I lost the bubble somewhere in this. So is this a substitute motion or, in a minute, this is a substitute motion, okay? I'm gonna reiterate what I said before. Regardless of what the training is we're imposing on our staff, I think it's not unreasonable for us to do what, do what we ask our staff to do on occasion, so I'm gonna keep with that position.
Are you next? Ms. Rosted?
Thank you. The training, I don't know this particular program, but if it's anything like I'm thinking, this training gives everybody an opportunity to learn about the next fellow next to them. We had several problems this past school year, you know, thinking someone just had a headscarf on because they didn't want to comb their hair. We've had all kinds of things that have gone on. And this is not to say anything other than we are not sensitive. And that's really what the training, be it this training or the one that I'm thinking about, this is what it is. So you can't feel me if you're not with me. So we sit in a room and at least we'll, and I understand, Mr. Deutsch, that we take up a lot of people's time. You know, we've had more togetherness probably than any board. So if we just stop for a minute and look at each other and talk about who we really are, our cultures are different. We've got six, I have 68 languages in the APSCO, 68. So I need cultural everything so that I'll be culturally sensitive to people. And I would hope that you will rethink this sometime going forward and maybe it could be into the next year. But if we're gonna be here, we need to be together and listening in this process. Thank you.
I would like to make a couple of comments. I think that we need to be involved, but I don't think that reviewing a module on your own time, tonight when I talked about closing the gap and the fact that is real, people became very uncomfortable and I know they did. Because we want to sit on this board and pretend that everybody's learning and they're not. And the, those communities of students that are not learning are very upset about this and it's in, I know it's in African-American churches and it's in various places. You know, we have a gap. We need to really deal with that, which means that we're dealing with different types of learners, different people from different backgrounds. And there's a book called Courageous Conversations.
Sorry.
I think you're out of order.
I am sorry.
The parliamentarians here. We have to have those conversations. We just skid over everything and we come up here and we say, everything is wonderful, all the kids are learning. The last time I looked at that college readiness and I asked about disaggregation, last year only 12% of African-American students in the state of Virginia were ready for college. 12%. It's not that they don't, they go to college, but they're always in remediation. They are the group that parents who are poor have to pay for five years of college because they spend a year in remediation. They are the kids who end up in this prison situation because they're illiterate and they have no skills. And I know some people don't understand what I'm trying to do and perhaps I didn't state it as well, but we have to deal with our current reality that we've got gaps, we've got gaps in learning, we've got gaps in facilities. I asked Ms. Goss to send me a list of, of the science labs. And in those 28, which I gave a list to Dr. Walts, in those 28 schools, Title I schools, there are only five schools that have dedicated science labs. And the community is beginning to realize this and it's either we deal with it here and we talk about it here or we have them coming to the boardroom. So I do think that we need to do it, but to do a module on our own time in our house when it's convenient, I think is bigger than that. And so I, I think we need a training, but I don't think we should do it with, in a training module on our own time. That's just my point of view. Mr. Wilt? It's Mr. D.
I still do not understand what the role is of the individual trainer and I understand that I was just dressed down for stating that fact. But I will, I will go a step further then. Ms. Goss spoke of the fact that in these school communities where they're going to have to have frank conversations, there has to be an ability to have safe conversations. So people can be open, they can be vulnerable and they can be safe and frank with each other to have a productive conversation that will improve things. And, and I agree, that's, that's critical to, to sharing and learning from each other so that things can be improved. Two things on that. One, there's a goal. The goal is how to improve that school and the activity of those teachers, staff, in terms of how they relate with each other and the students and the individuals in that school. And that makes what happens there valuable and gives a construct to it. Secondly, though, is the importance of being able to be safe and vulnerable with each other. You know, we, we tried this before. A year ago, we all got in a room, we decided to, even though we had differences, we were going to open up to each other, we were going to share about each other, about ourselves. Some of us shared very personal things about ourselves. There were tears, there were joys because we were able to be frank and vulnerable with each other. And there was a hope that that would lead to increased understanding. That did not. That vulnerability was taken advantage of when leaders of this board went ahead and called the rest of us racist and multiple times refused to apologize. So I am sorry, we do not have a board where we can be frank and vulnerable and learn from each other, when that is the protected activity that can result from that vulnerability. So I don't know both what the goal is of having that trainer and I don't believe that we have an ability to have those safe and vulnerable conversations. That's why I think we can do something productive by opening up the modules to all of us so we can review, we can understand, we can talk to other people about them and how to review them, but I don't see the value in that second part and that's why I offered my amendment.
I think this is a final comment, we're gonna take the vote. Ms. Williams?
Sure, I just wanted to make clear, Mr. Deutsch, if you felt I was dressing you down, that that's not what I was doing. In my opinion and I understand, that's why I stated that if I sound aggressive prior to my comment so that we're all on the same page, it's not a matter of dressing down, it's just a matter for me of understanding. And from where I sit after going through several trainings in these type of incidences, when I hear what you said, to me, it's an indicator that this is an all the more reason why that we need this training. It's not a matter of me picking on you or a matter of me dressing you down, it's a matter of me acknowledging that what I'm hearing from you is a lack of understanding of why it's important to do this in a face-to-face, which is not a criticism, it's my understanding of what you said. And so if that's not correct or you feel that I have spoke down to you or been critical of you, I apologize for that because that's not my intention, which is why I stated, if I sound aggressive, please forgive me. But yes, definitely, there is a face-to-face component in this and I understand for the schools that there's a goal, the goal should still be the same and that is to learn from each other. And if you don't feel comfortable and being vulnerable with us as a board, that's something that we should work on together as a board. It's not always going to be that we all see eye to eye because I think it's good to have disagreements and differences of opinion, but to create an environment where you can do this training, you can be safe or feel safe, is a very important thing. And if you don't feel safe when doing this type of training or maybe, maybe we could talk about that, not necessarily publicly, but understanding what, what those components would need to be in order to make that happen for you is very important, as opposed to just saying you don't feel safe and we can't do it. We should explore what it is that could create that environment to make that happen. If we're truly committed to learning and bettering ourselves as a board, then we have to talk about the things that prevent us from working together as well.
Done? Okay. The main motion is that the Prince William County School Board attend multicultural training on a date to be determined. The proposed substitute is the Prince William County School Board be given access to training modules to review on their own time. Those in favor of the substitute motion, vote yes. Those opposed to that substitute motion, vote no. It's time to take the vote.
Excuse me, Mrs. Jesse. The online voting is currently not working, so can we do a show of hands, please?
Oh, what a night, okay. Yeah, here we go. We just show our hands, show our hands. Those in favor of the substitute motion, raise your hand. Two. Those opposed?
The vote is two yes, five no. Motion failed.
Okay, now we go back to the. The main motion. Is there any further discussion on the main motion? Those in favor of the main motion? Vote yes. Those opposed? Seven.
Those in favor?
Those in. You got it, Debbie?
The vote is six yes, one no. Motion passed.
Okay, let's start here. You're ready to, I'm done. Ms., Mr., Mr. Trenna?
I was just gonna talk real quick. Yes, I just wanted to be very brief because I'm not feeling well. I had surgery a week ago and so I just wanna leave. But I wanna thank the principals again for coming tonight. We kept them here for three hours and I know a lot of them probably had not been home since very, very early this morning, just like our associates who are still here. So I wanna thank them for being with us tonight for the strategic plan report. So, thank you.
Mr. Trenna?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Couple things, first off, I was able to attend Cedar, the Cedar Point Elementary, the ribbing cutting for the tech lab. It's a new steam lab that they've got that the principal, there has worked with, it's inspired by the Qualcomm Thinkabit lab in Falls Church and it's a partnership between Prince William County Schools, Qualcomm, Virginia Tech and a couple, and I think maybe one or two other organizations to, at the elementary level to get kids involved in basic engineering approaches that they were learning coding techniques and some electronics and things like that. When they discussed it, the Virginia Tech is looking to bring another one online next year on the eastern side of the county. So, and it will be available for schools all across the county to come visit, so our students don't have to drive all the way to Falls Church, we'll be able to do it here within Prince William County. I think that's a wonderful thing. Also, in the category of better late than never, I wanna congratulate Victory Elementary School. The Virginia Board of Education reviewed some of the data and after a further review, Victory was awarded the distinguished achievement award for advanced learning and achievement. So congratulations, Victory Elementary. Also, next week, I will be back at both schools for their Veterans Day celebrations. I'm looking forward to that. And also on the earlier discussion about the college readiness stuff, I look forward to some further discussion with the staff. Mr. Deutsch, you said, a question as far as, is there an indicator that we can use that students are ready to go off and either be, you know, prepared for college or career? I would argue that the, if you're looking for a single indicator that. I would argue that the, if you're looking for a single indicator, that would probably be the graduation rate. But there's an assumption on that, in that the students that graduate have completed a curriculum that is rigorous and preparatory. So it's our job to make sure that the curriculum is there for them that they go through, but assuming that we've got that in place, then that would be the indicator for that particular question. But I think the college readiness question is much more complex, with a lot more variables. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Williams? I mean, Ms. Rosted?
Thank you. I just have one thing. I attended with Rita Goss, it was last Monday, I believe. It's the parent camp at the United States Department of Education. It was quite interesting, and we had parent camp here this past weekend, and not Prince William County schools. So I thought that was a very interest, it was interesting, it reminded me back in the day of Title I. So, Ms. Jesse, I know you would appreciate this, because the parents really came out for the, for this event. And they do this once, I guess, once or twice a year at the U.S. Department of Education. So I don't see Ms. Goss, has she left? Okay. So she need, I would like to find out when the next one is here within our district. Do you know our, it, okay. So if you would, Debbie, I'd appreciate it. Oh, that's okay, I'll call her. Stop and tell her. Thank you very much, and that's it. Good night, everybody.
I'll give a quick condensed version, and I know I've had a good time. I want to thank Triangle Elementary for inviting me to the Wild West Book Fair. I got to be a celebrity reader with a couple other central office figures. My family and I, last Friday, attended the Forest Park-Potomac football game. Great event, take the four kids out. My five and two-year-old loved it. We only made it to halftime, though, but that was a victory for us. But Potomac ended up winning, so good game, the battle of Potomac District. I want to thank the Forest Park PTO and the local vendors. Attended the Forest Park Holiday Market last Saturday, some great stuff happening. Yesterday, on my way back from Richmond, I was able to swing by and visit Swans Creek Elementary in Mary Williams. Want to compliment and say some great stuff happening, despite it being Halloween and craziness, and came in like an hour before the end of the day, so it was great. Briefly, I mentioned I was down in Richmond. I was down there advocating, I want to, I can't, I don't know if the parent has permission to say her name, so I will say, a parent at Ashland made me aware of a great program called the Virginia, excuse me, called the Ohio Purple Star Program. It was adopted in the state of Ohio under Governor Kucinich, not Kucinich, oh my God, that was scary, Kasich, sorry, Kucinich, wow, that'd be scary. Governor Kasich, great program that they're doing in Ohio, and I was down there advocating for it. It basically is a way of designating schools that apply and go through a process, being basically very military-friendly. It gives training to the staff. Each building gets a parent liaison who goes through this module and this training with people to help facilitate information to military families, and it also provides standardized resources for these families. So very exciting down there. I'll write a little bit more about it, I may even do that. But the cool thing about it is, it was adopted down in Virginia at the Interstate Compact in Richmond on Friday, so we will be, other than Ohio, I believe Rhode Island and Wisconsin are right behind us, but we will be moving forward in the state of Virginia. That should be coming out with the state superintendent notes for Virginia Star Program, so all of our schools will be able to apply for that. So very cool. Have a good night, everyone.
Adolph?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Quickly, we all got to have a great time at the superintendent's business breakfast last Thursday. I think, I think probably half us were there, Diane, Vice Chairwoman, Chairman Steuer, myself. And, you know, it was a really good time to see a lot of the different, you know, of course, interact with business leaders, the Spark Board, hear about all the great things they're doing for the school division, but then also interact with a lot of the students and the exciting things that they're doing. Different robotics programs, different innovations going on in the school system. And we had, I think in the back of the room, we had two long tables of all the students who were there, and seeing what, seeing what they were doing, it was just, it was an exciting time, be able to interact, talk to them, and just an exciting time. Also, something else. Oh, I wanted to give a shout-out to the Marshall Boy Scout Group that was here earlier. Got to speak with them middle of last week, I believe it was. Good little group, and fielded all kinds of questions about school board, about schools. They were asking questions about how they could improve things in their schools and different ideas they had. So they're, their idea seems to be to have all kinds of petitions and bring them to their principals, so they seem to be a creative and energetic bunch, and it was, it was a good time and glad to have them here. Also want to give a shout-out to all of the principals who were here, you know, and really, the most valuable resource we all have is our time, and we had over 50 principals here for three hours. And I just wanted to really express my appreciation for all of the things they do for our school division, and, you know, they are constantly at their schools late into the night with all kinds of events, and just wanted to share my appreciation there. Thank you.
I won't add much more, other than to say to the principals that I appreciate them being here. We are in a situation, as public school people, where we have an administration who is looking at us and saying, we're not closing the gap, and they're looking at other ways, and this has been with the previous administration, too, that they're all concerned about education. And I think that principals, I've been one, it's very difficult work, and we go to meetings at night, is very important that we understand the magnitude of what we're doing as public school people, that we show the public that we are aware of where we're doing great, but we also have to show the people that we are aware that there are areas that we need to improve on. And I want to thank them for coming. I know what it's like, like I said, and they are just phenomenal people. And so with that, there be no further.